Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to declare the presence of a quorum. We have well in excess of 100 voters and I will call to order the annual town meeting. As voters arrive on behalf of the town clerk, I will read the constable's return of service. Pursuant to the written warrant, I have notified and warned the inhabitants of the town of Chatham by posting a tested copies of the same in each of the post offices of said town at least 14 days before May 10, 2025, or March 24, 2025. Signed, John Proudfoot, Constable. Because we have electronic voting, we no longer have tellers. You have in the years past seen me swear the tellers in. Instead, those attending to our electronic voting system have been sworn to the faithful performance of their duties. And as in prior years, we have a cart system for the hearing impaired. I would encourage anyone who would like to avail themselves of this service to sit in the front of the room to my right and your left. We welcome back Stephanie Farrell, who has assisted us for many years. We will now be honored by a presentation of colors by a contingent of Chatham Scouts from Girl Scout Troop 80727 and Boy Scout Troop 71, who will also lead us in the pledge To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. We appreciate your efforts in being here. As in the past, we acknowledge with appreciation the service of those town officials who have died since our last annual meeting. Please join me in a moment of silence as I read the names of those town officers and employees who died during calendar year 2024. Don Aikman, Ivan Bassett, Howard Berkowitz, Dougie Bowman, Steve Burlingame, Cade Ford, Erica De Zitter, Carl Furley, Thomas Goodrow, Lee Kimball, Jack Martin, Dick McCoy, George Metters, Jack Perry, William Plumer, John Rudy, Hank Russian, Ron Scroy, Andy Siflard, Bob Starkweather Jr., Alberta Stello, Phyllis Talston, Frank Tobin, Ally Vanderburgh, Bill Wackenfeld, Michael Waters, and Mark Zebrot. Thank you. We are grateful for their service. We have a non-voters section in the bleachers to my right at the rear of the hall. Non-voters are required to sit in that section and are not allowed to participate in voice votes. If we have an overflow crowd, I'll ask them to remove themselves to the auditorium, but it appears that we are okay at this point. Please use one of these several microphones when you speak. There are two in the center aisle and one on the south side to my right and your left. The appropriate way to gain recognition or to speak is to rise and say, Mr. Moderator. I'll do my best to get to everyone in turn, but except as required by law, no one has priority in being recognized and all voters are equal in this forum. You may however form a line if you'd like to do so, but I reserve the right to recognize others depending on the course of discussion. Please identify yourself when you speak. And by way of example, my name is Bill Litchfield. I'm elected by you as the town meeting moderator to decide questions of orders and to do my best to run your town meetings fairly. I'll now introduce our officials up front, our select board, Mike Shell, the chair, along with, I'm doing it alphabetically, not the way you're sitting, Shereen Davis, Jeff Dykens, Corey Metters, and Dean Nacastro, our town manager Jill Goldsmith, and our town council Jay Tollerman in front. To my left and your right, your finance committee, again alphabetically, Kristin Andres, Tommy Doan, Barbara Madison, John Papalardo, Tracy Shields, Joanne Sprague, and Andy Young. Our able FinCom chair Stephen Daniel and Eric Whitley are both unavoidably absent and extend their regrets. Every person here, of course, deserves courtesy and respect. The appropriate way of speaking to another voter is as the previous speaker and not by any other appellation. The moderator has the authority to require that you conclude your remarks if they're inappropriate. You may shortly adopt a rule imposing time limits on remarks, and if you do, I will do my best to be firm in enforcing that. We will once again consider a consent calendar to expedite consideration of articles which are presumably non-controversial and which enjoy the unanimous support of your finance committee and your select board. Some other articles may not be moved. Motions actually offered may differ from that which is printed in the warrant. That which is read prevails, so please listen too carefully to the motion being made. If you wish to offer an amendment, it must be in writing and handed to me after you make it. Please see Mr. Tollerman in the front row, who can help you with language. I acknowledge with appreciation the flowers that were delivered to me earlier this morning. That was very thoughtful. If there is a procedural issue about which you are unclear, please let me know and do so before we start to vote by rising and asking for a point of order or a point of information. Feel free to ask questions on procedural issues. Failings there are my fault, not yours. You are, of course, now experienced at electronic voting. You received a clicker, which we will use for many, but not necessarily every vote. As you know, the clicker has three buttons, but the only two to which you need to pay attention are the one green yes vote and the two red no button. When it's time to vote, simply press green for yes, red for no, and if you make a mistake or after you vote, okay will display, okay one or okay two. It may take a few seconds, so don't panic if it doesn't register immediately, particularly early on in the voting. But if there is an issue, please bring it to our attention and we'll replace your clicker. If you make a mistake, you can change your mind by pressing the op or change your vote by pressing the opposite vote. During the voting window, and we will have a test momentarily, and I think it's now working, the voting system has been working. There was a problem with the display, but the total of votes will be displayed, but not the results until we are done. When you depart, please be sure to drop off your clicker. It won't do you any good if you bring it secretly to the next meeting because it will be disabled if it's not here. But it will cost you as taxpayer money, so we appreciate your dropping them off. And if you, if you just put it in your pocket and you forget, you may at any point drop it off at the police station, the fire station, the town offices, any municipal facility would be fine. So get your clickers out and we will try a test. The first question is, and I think it's going to be displayed momentarily. We, as I said, we had a problem with the display screen, not with the program itself. Yes, there it is. This was, this building was once the home of the Chatham Blue Devils. So the question we are asking today is, is, is blue your favorite color? We will now open the vote, so please get your clicker ready and go ahead and vote. Again, it may take a few seconds. Now after you vote, you'll get okay yes or okay one or okay two, as the case may be. Is there anyone who has not voted? If not, we will now display the vote. Close the vote, please. And the vote is yes, 299, no, 181. There were no abstentions noted for turquoise, so we'll move forward. Through the moderator, you may, of course, ask questions of any official on matters being considered by the meeting. You are absolutely entitled to ask those questions, and as I said earlier, in this forum, all voters are equal. You act today as the town's legislature, and your decisions govern our collective future as a community in many ways. You are, of course, to be commended for being here and for exercising your right, which is how democracy works. We've maintained in Chatham this system for several hundred years, although I recognize, of course, that not everyone is a fan of town meeting. In fact, one person characterized town meeting as, and I'll quote, "The proceedings of a tumultuous and riotous rabble who ought, if they had the least prudence, not trouble themselves with politics and government, which they do not understand." That was the opinion of Lord Germain, King George III, Secretary of the Colonies, expressed 250 years ago, but we're still here and we still do understand, so we're doing reasonably well. I will now recognize Mr. Shell, the chair of the Board of Selectment for Resolution on the Rules found on page 18. Mr. Shell moves that we adopt the rules of procedure as set forth in this article in the warrant.
I do so move.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Discussion of the resolution. If not, we'll put the matter to a vote and we'll do a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. So voted unanimously. Even though the clickers are quick, voice votes on things like this are even faster. So there may be occasions when I will deviate from the electronic voting. There may be a matter on which I, on which I need to speak or wish to speak and will thus step down, and we also need a deputy moderator for the other room. In the past, we have elected two such individuals, and you need to do the same today. Mr. Shell nominates Paul Semple and David Whitcomb as deputy moderators. Any other nominations? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. So voted unanimously. Mr. Semple, I assume that you can hear me in there, and if I call for a voice vote and there is any discrepancy with what you hear, please let me know forthwith. I guess I should start by saying, Paul, please confirm that you can communicate with me. Is, is Mr. Semple's mic on?
I can.
It is on.
I can hear you.
Is it, is his waist thing turned on? Do we know? We're checking on it, but I've not.
I can, I can hear you, Bill.
Oh, thank you. And I can hear you. We're in good shape. Thank you very much. Article one, to elect town officers, will be acted on at the community center on Main Street on Thursday, May 15. Polls will be open from 7:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. Article two, to hear the reports of town officers and committees, and I would, well, first, recognize Mr. Shell for motion.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town moderator and select board be authorized to appoint the necessary town officers whose appointments are not otherwise provided for, and that the town hear and accept the reports of various town officers and committees as they appear in the town report.
Thank you. Mr. Shell, now recognize the vice chair of the finance committee, Mr. Young.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. As you've heard, Stephen is unable to be here, but he did ask me to present his remarks. They're very brief. Morning, everyone. Welcome to Chatham's 2025 Annual Town Meeting. We are pleased you've elected to join us, participating in what many have observed to be the purest form of representative democracy. To begin, my sincere gratitude to the men and women of this committee who collectively have committed well over 300 hours of their time in working to understand and provide feedback to the select board, the town manager, and the department heads on the 59 articles embedded in this year's warrant. That's a lot of work, and I'm proud to be their colleague. I would also like to offer the thanks of the entire committee to the town moderator, the select board, the town manager, our finance director, and all of the town employees who have worked so thoroughly since last autumn to get us to this day. If you've not yet taken the time to do so, I encourage you to read the report of the finance committee, which begins on page two of the annual warrant. Our report will provide you with a summary of the budgetary process as well as various major components of our municipal budget. Additionally, we highlight topics of note that have caught our eye over the course of this year's budget cycle. As we have come to expect, Chatham rests on a robust financial foundation, as evidenced by the recently confirmed AAA bond rating issued by Standard and Poor's, the global bond rating agency. With respect to individual warrant articles, there generally wasn't a lot of daylight between our view of a particular article and the select board's view. Article 38, which would allow finance committee members to serve as members of other town advisory and ad hoc committees, was the exception to this observation, with the select board being split on the matter while the finance committee voted unanimously to support the article. As I observed last year, at a time when governance has often become more dysfunctional and fractured, town meeting stands apart. Here, everyone is a legislature. Everyone can make a difference in affecting change in our community. Thank you again for joining us today.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Further discussion under Article two. If there is none, we'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor of motions offered by Mr. Shell say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. So voted unanimously. Article three, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate or transfer sufficient sums as deemed necessary for the line items as set forth in this article from the budget under the 2024 Annual Town Meeting. For a motion, Mr. Nacastro.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to transfer a total of $378,200 from the following available funds to meet said appropriation. $316,200 from free cash to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Transfer $60,000 from Fire Department's operating capital expense line to the General Fund Liability Insurance Expense Line. Transfer $2,000 from the Railroad Receipts Reserve for Appropriation Fund to the Railroad Operating Budget.
Thank you, Mr. Nacastro. Finance committee recommendation, Mr. Doan.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article three provides for the town to make internal cash transfers from one budgetary category to another. The two primary drivers of these transfers was an unforeseen increase in the cost of insurance relating to the Fire Department as well as to correct an accounting oversight dating back to 2009. That resulted in interest income being credited to the wrong account in the town's general ledger. The finance committee unanimously supported this article.
Thank you, Mr. Doan. Further discussion under Article three. If not, we'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. So voted unanimously. I will now read to you, this is under the consent calendar topic, which is not in your warrant per se. I will now read to you a list of articles proposed to be considered under the consent calendar process, which we've used for quite a few years to expedite consideration of annual or recurring or otherwise presumably non-controversial matters. If you want to discuss or have questions about a particular article, when I read it, please say hold. When I mention it, it'll be deleted from the list and will be considered in the regular order. So if there's anything here on this list that you want to discuss, we'll take it off. So please listen as I go through the list. Article four, salaries of elected officials. Article five, consolidated revolving funds. Article eight, wood waste revolving funds. Article 12, the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School annual appropriation. Article 19, the replacement of an ambulance. Article 21, the annual waterways dredging request. Article 22, childcare vouchers. Article 25, the annual other post-employment benefits fund appropriation. Article 27, administrative expenses for our community preservation committee. Article 28, the required reserve appropriations under the Community Preservation Act. Article 35, funding for an open space and recreation plan under the CPA. Article 36, PEG access for funding of public access television. Article 41, grant of a utility easement by the town. Article 41 is off the list. Article 42, grant of a utility easement for water treatment facility on Training Field Road. Article 43, grant of a utility easement from the town for the new sewer pump station on Stage Harbor Road. Article 44, refiling with the Great and General Court, a home rule petition seeking an exemption from the prevailing wage statute. That 44 is off. Article 46, to refile with the state legislature, a home rule petition allowing CPA funds to be used for attainable as well as affordable funding. So two are off the list, Articles 41 and 44. Mr. Shell moves that the report of the finance committee on the articles just read, except for Articles 41 and 44, as the proposed consent calendar be accepted, and that the town vote to approve each of the said articles and raise an appropriate or transfer, as the case may be. Such sums of money is set forth in the warrant for each article. Under the statute, Articles 41, 42, and 43 require a two-thirds vote, so to pass the entire vote under this motion requires a two-thirds vote. So we will now vote on the consent calendar, and the, we'll vote electronically, and the Is there anyone who's not voted? Now we'll close the vote. The vote is 455 yes, 26 opposed, well in excess of the two-thirds. I would simply, and this is a very, very minor comment, for those of you who voted against it, please, in future years, feel free to put hold on any particular article and we can remove it. You obviously may vote as you see fit, but that might be a useful thing. We will now move to Article, oh, we've moved four and five is done, so we will now move to Article six, the annual airport revolving fund authorization. For a motion, Mr. Metters.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town authorize and approve the airport revolving fund spending limit for fiscal year 2026 in the amounts listed in Article six of the warrant.
Thank you, Mr. Metters. Finance committee recommendation, Ms. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As it was for the other revolving fund amounts, the airport revolving fund remains unchanged. The purpose of this fund is to segregate revenues and restrict their use to purposes for which they are collected. The finance committee voted eight to zero in support of approving the airport revolving fund.
Thank you, Ms. Shields. Further discussion under Article six. Now we'll put the matter to a vote. We'll try a voice vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no.
No.
So voted by a very substantial majority. Article seven, a new program, the establishment of a revolving fund for an adult supportive daycare program, is set forth in this article. For a motion, Mr. Shell.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town amend Chapter 37, Article one of the general bylaws to establish an adult supportive daycare program revolving fund pursuant to the authority granted under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E1/2, as printed in Article seven of the warrant, and that no more than $50,000 be expended from this fund during fiscal year 2026.
Thank you, Mr. Shell. Finance committee recommendation, Ms. Madison.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Unanimously supported by all nine members of the finance committee, this article would establish a revolving fund segregating funds raised by the adult daycare program to the operation of that program. Use of these funds, up to the amount annually authorized by town meeting, may be expended by the community service department and the town manager.
Thank you, Ms. Madison. Further discussion under Article seven. If not, we'll put the matter to a vote, a voice vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. So voted by a very substantial majority. Article eight was cast on the consent calendar. Article nine, the annual municipal operating budget. For a motion, Ms. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $44,154,028 to fund the operating budget for the town for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, for the purposes and amounts designated in the column titled Proposed Budget Fiscal Year 2026 of Article nine of the warrant, and to meet said appropriation, the town raised $43,147,868 through taxation and transferred $180,000 from the Waterways Improvement Fund, $30,000 from the Wetlands Protection Fund, $156,000 from the PEG Cable Access Fund, $20,000 from the Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund, $5,000 from the Railroad Museum Fund, and $615,160 from the Cape Cod and Islands Water Protection Fund for debt service.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. I'll get to the finance committee, but we will start with our town manager for a presentation and then go to the finance committee. Ms. Goldsmith.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good morning, town meeting voters. I'd like to begin by expressing my sincere gratitude to town staff, the select board, and the finance committee for your collaboration and dedication, resulting in the presentation of a balanced town operating budget presented today under Article nine for the fiscal year 2026, which runs from July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2026. I'm presenting a $44,154,028 municipal budget, an 8.19% increase over fiscal year 2025, summarized in just four slides. That's possible to our inclusive and transparent budget process, which helps position the town to retain its AAA bond rating affirmed last month, and ensures we continue delivering services to all members of our community. Our financial planning span, our financial planning spans nearly nine months, beginning with a fall budget summit and continuing through winter and spring with detailed reviews. This process led to the unanimous approval by the select board and favorable recommendations from the finance committee on all financial articles. This stay in the course budget focuses on addressing current challenges like staffing needs, utility costs, and inflation, while maintaining seamless delivery of services and investing in our community's future. Our dedicated staff are the engine behind our progress, consistently identifying opportunities to improve and innovate services. This year's budget directed was developed in consultation with the select board and reflects our shared commitment to fiscal responsibility and delivering services that benefit the entire community. Shown here is a breakdown of the municipal budget expenses under this article. This slide represents a comparison of expenses by budget This slide represents a comparison of expenses by budget category, looking back one year to fiscal year 2024, the voted budget as-- and the voted budget of this current year, FY 2025, and then forward one year to the FY 2026 budget as presented today. The percentage changes to the current fiscal year are noted in the last column. Increases in each budget category are predominantly related to wages for the 161 town employees, as well as seasonal staffing, which comprises 42% of the workforce. A priority investment is our human capital. Labor cost pressures due to the limited regional labor market require compensating employees at a livable wage to stay. There are also five new positions funded in the budget to strengthen critical operations. As described in Appendix via the warrant, the overall 8.19% increase includes contractual obligations and fixed cost increases. Other budget drivers include health insurance and property insurance costs, debt service for previously approved debt, and funding of our Ryder's Cove Respite Adult Supportive Day Program, which is currently funded by a state grant that expires soon. The great work of our town employees to find funding opportunities outside of the tax rate is highly commendable. Grant funding received last year offset both the operating and capital budgets. Staff receive grants for dredging and coastal resiliency efforts, fire safety equipment, and recycling programs at the transfer station, to name a few. Shown here are the overall expense categories for FY 2026, including educational assessments, with public safety, public works and facilities, debt service, and employee benefits having the majority of the expense distribution. The education assessments under Articles ten and twelve combined provide for 19% of the overall expenses, which is consistent with the budget voted in fiscal year 2025. Sorry about that. The budget presented under Article nine does not include items presented as separate warrant articles. However, those are reflected in our financial impact statement. With revenue offsets to the tax rate from local receipts, such as permits, room occupancy and meal taxes, motor vehicle excise taxes, ambulance fees, and building permits, the projected tax rate, including all articles considered for funding at this annual town meeting via the tax levy, reflects an increase of 27 cents, or 7.78%. The estimated tax rate is 3.74. This does not account for the potential property valuation adjustments. So for context, last year's tax rate was $3.57, and the current tax rate is $3.47. We continue our efforts to ensure that Chatham remains a vibrant, welcoming, and well-prepared community for future generations to come. The FY 2026 stay in the course operating and capital budgets advance key community initiatives and Select Board directives, providing the resources needed to meet these goals while maintaining the high level of services our residents expect and deserve. Chatham's operational success is built not only on sound financial management, but also on the dedication and expertise of our professional staff, Team Chatham, along with the strong support of our elected leaders, appointed officials, engaged volunteers, and you, our informed voters. Your collective efforts enrich the programs, services, and experience that preserve the strong sense of community that makes Chatham such a special place. Thank you for attending today's town meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Goldsmith. Finance Committee, recommendation, Mr. Papalardo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. While the proposed operating budget has increased 8.19% over last year's operating budget, it is the Finance Committee's view that this is still a generally conservative proposed budget, noting that much of the increase is due to scheduled increases in salaries, employee benefits, debt service, and the rising cost of general liability insurance. On a vote of nine to zero, the Finance Committee supports and recommends Article nine.
Thank you, Mr. Papalardo. Further discussion under Article nine. Yes, sir. Just as a reminder, I can't always hear hands, so it would be appropriate to stand and say, "Mr. Moderator." I do my best, but you're safer if you rise and say, "Mr. Moderator." And when you speak, please introduce yourself by name. Sir?
Good afternoon, or sorry, good morning, I guess it's still. Bill Glass, North Chatham. Comments on the presentation and the budget? The spokesperson for the Finance Committee did use the term conservative. I'd like to remind my fellow citizens that 8% increase in the budget in an environment where general inflation is measured to be about 2.5%. I don't think I would use the word conservative to describe that outcome, and if the committee feels that way, I guess I stand to disagree. The second point is that, as with most of the resolutions presented today, there was unanimity on the Finance Committee. So when we're increasing the budget of the town by triple the inflation rate, and all of the Finance Committee agrees that that's the right thing to do, I'm wondering if there are any stewards for conserv-- real conservatism and the interest of the voters present on the Finance Committee. Looking at the remarks that were in the warrant, much of the increase is blamed on contractual obligations, as if contracts seem to fall from heaven and are imposed on us without decision-making on the part of our leadership. So all in all, I rise to say I was disappointed in the Finance Committee's evaluation and remarks in light of all of this. An increase in the budget of 8% in an environment of 3% inflation means that we have 5% real increase in the budget this year. If that increase trended forward, we would be doubling the real cost of our town budget or town services in 15 years. Ladies and gentlemen, this is an unsustainable trajectory. Private sector periodically assesses its workforce and makes reductions, adopting technology, better ways, so that the real cost of manpower and woman power to run the organization is held in check. If you look at the trend lines of employment for the town, this concept and process seems to be lost on our political leadership. I rise to say I will vote no for this, and I ask my colleagues to consider my remarks and send a message to the town that this trajectory is unsustainable. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Glass. Mrs. Sprague.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and I would just like to reply to the remarks about the Finance Committee's decisions. This committee spent way over 300 hours working on these recommendations that we made and going through the percentages of increase, and we find-- and we did have varying opinions amongst us as we were doing it, but in order to keep the town progressing, in order to keep our education facilities at a high level, these are the recommended recommendations we came up with, and they are for the benefit of the townspeople sitting here watching to see some people who've had the time to spend close to 400 hours on these questions. So thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Ms. Sprague. Further discussion under Article nine. Now we'll put the matter to a vote, and we'll take this by an electronic vote, and I was-- I am advised that sometimes there's a little bit of a lag with getting the votes tallied from the auditorium, so we'll keep this open a little bit longer. We will now open the vote, and those in favor vote yes, those in favor vote no. Mr. Semple, is there anyone in there who was not yet voted in the auditorium? I'm gonna assume-- oop. Paul, can you hear me?
Everyone has voted.
Everyone has voted. Thank you. We will now close the vote. Display the count. The vote is three hundred and sixty-five in favor, 146 opposed, requires a majority vote, Article nine is passed. Article ten, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate sum of money for Chatham's share of the Monomoy Regional School District for fiscal year 2026. For a motion, Mr. Dykens.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $11,118,811 to fund the operating budget for the Monomoy Regional School District for the fiscal year beginning July one, 2025, for the purposes and amounts designated in the column titled Proposed Budget Fiscal Year 2026 of Article ten of the warrant, and to meet said appropriation, the town raised $11,083,811 through taxation and transferred $35,000 from the Educational Cable Access Fund.
Thank you, Mr. Dykens. Finance Committee, recommendation, Ms. Sprague.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee, in order to continue to provide an excellent education for our schoolchildren, unanimously recommends approval of this article.
Thank you, Ms. Sprague, for the discussion. I know that there are members of our school committee here who can speak. They would like to-- further discussion under Article ten. If not, we'll try a voice vote. All those in-- bear in mind first that the motion as offered by Mr. Dykens was for a somewhat lower sum, $11,181,811 rather than the sum in the warrant. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. So voted by a very substantial majority. Article eleven, to see if the town will vote to approve the sum of $9,730 in debt authorized by the Monomoy Regional School District to pay costs for renovationist to this building. For a motion, Mr. Dykens.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town approves the $9,730 debt authorized by the Monomoy Regional School District to pay the cost of renovating and reconstructing the exterior siding and replacement of windows for the Monomoy Regional Middle School, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto.
Thank you, Mr. Dykens. Finance Committee, recommendation, Ms. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. After significant testing and further study, this critical restoration project of the building's sidings, and now including window replacement, needs this additional debt authorization. We have an incredible facility for our middle school, offering more than most middle schools are capable of, as it was designed initially for a high school. The Finance Committee unanimously supports this borrowing authorization for the amount of $9,730, of which Chatham's share is 2 million, estimated at $2,887,300 for the Monomoy Regional School District.
Thank you, Ms. Shields. Now recognize Mr. Troy, a member of the Monomoy Regional School Building Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I was privileged to serve as co-chair of the Monomoy Middle School Building Committee, along with co-chair Ed McManus of Harwich. The two towns assembled an excellent committee, including several members with construction industry talent, school personnel, and community members. We work closely with consulting architects and engineers to deal with serious water and moisture penetration issues facing this very building. In 2024 town meeting, it was approved that we had $2.5 million approved to initially study the repair needs of the siding and related building envelope issues. After extensive probing and study of wall conditions under the shingles, it was found that there was extensive moisture penetration into the sheathing, but fortunately not yet into the interior insulation or drywall. Therefore, time is of the essence, and this needs to be addressed now to prevent further degradation. The project will be handled in two phases. Phase one is what's in front of us this morning, and that's for siding and windows, which is the building envelope. The windows are almost 30 years old and appear to be serviceable; however, they do need to be removed in order to properly flash each window opening in conjunction with new synthetic siding that will be installed. Our committee recommended replacing the windows with current code windows with greater energy efficiency and wind resistance. The superintendent's office has submitted a green initiative grant for 2.1 millions, but this is pending until later on this year. The siding will be composite materials versus the current cedar shingles and pine trim, and all trim will be composite, AZEC-type composite material, yielding long life and moderate maintenance needs over future years. The second phase is the roof, which is not subject to this article, but this is for information only. This will be brought to town meeting next year. Sections of the roof of this building are 35 years old, and the middle school section that was built in the mid-'90s is 30 years old. The roof project is eligible for 37% state reimbursement through the Mass School Building Authority, but with the lead time of applications, that will have to be a 2026 project. To do this project right, it is estimated to cost $11,507,030. Net the funds previously appropriated, the Regional School District plans to vote for a debt exclusion of $9,730. Chatham's share is based on average school enrollment, which yields a share of only 23.19%, and Harwich is paying 76.81%, which Harwich Town Meeting already approved earlier this week, and they still-- Harwich is requiring them to pass that at the polls on May 20th
Thank you, Mr. Troy. Thank you, Mr. Troy. There we go. Thank you, Mr. Troy. Further discussion under Article eleven. Yes, sir?
Matthew Barnes, River Bay. Also an employee at this school, and I've been coming to the school for 16 or 17 years now, and this building envelope has been worked on and repaired, like consistently over the years, but the building is fantastic, but if we don't fix the envelope, it's gonna go downhill. I have a computer lab, and I've had to rearrange the furniture so that water doesn't get on the computers at times, so now's the time to get it done, and the longer we wait, the more it's gonna cost. I am on the building committee, and I'm consistently impressed with the talent that they were able to assemble. We have construction pros, we have a construction estimator. These people know what they're doing, and I trust their judgment, so please support this. You know, it's going to be an investment, and with the warranties on some of these items, at my age, it looks like a lifetime warranty. We do have a non-voter who's interested in speaking. Can she ask permission?
There is a request for a non-voter to speak. Is there-- I'll see if there's any objection. Is there any objection to having a non-voter speak?
Yes.
There is objection. We will now vote by majority.
Lord, I read it.
Well, we're first gonna vote on whether the non-voter is gonna be allowed to speak. I believe this is a non-voter who may live here, but is not yet the age of eighteen because she goes to school here. All those, we'll just do a voice vote. All those in favor allowing the non-voter to speak, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. So voted. If you could come forward, take the mic, introduce yourself.
Good morning, Chatham residents. My name is Lucy Cortezzi, and I'm a seventh grade student athlete at Montemoy Middle School. I am thirteen years old, so I cannot vote today. However, I am here to inform you about renovating the middle school. The now Montemoy Middle School building was built in the nineteen fifties, and in addition was added in the nineties. The building committee is proposing the replacement of the windows and siding of the school building, as well as the roof and ear. In fifth grade, my classroom was moved to a conference room due to issues with the siding and a strange odor. In addition, roof leaks are frequent in classrooms, the bandroom, STEM room, and sometimes this gym that you are in now. After one particular rainstorm, the band students had to have rehearsal in another classroom because the rainwater was seeping through the shingles and paneling, and it was collected in buckets. I want my peers to have a healthy and safe learning space to develop key life skills and vital knowledge. Also, we need a safe space for the staff of Montemoy Middle School so they can do their job to the best of their abilities. This project is important for your children and grandchildren to have a healthy learning environment for the years to come. Please vote yes for the education of Montemoy children and the children of the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Usually, the only occasion which applause that loud is engendered is when a speaker says, "In closing." Yes, sir.
John Huether, President of Chatham. As I'm reading this, and I read into it that our share is two million plus dollars. But you're asking for nine million dollars.
Nine million.
Why? I don't understand. If our share is two million, why are you asking for nine million?
It's being asked for...
Mr. Troy care to respond to Mr. Huether?
It's being asked for the Montemoy Regional School System in total, which includes Harwich.
Yeah.
Chatham's share is the twenty-three percent. And that's what is being requested of this meeting.
Would it be correct, Mr. Troy, or Ms. Mazurul, or anyone else, to say that this is, the town will be voting to approve the authorized debt rather than appropriating money? That would be correct to say?
Yes.
Yes.
So are you asking for nine million dollars, or are you asking for two million dollars?
Two million from Chatham.
Two million from Chatham. So you're asking for two million dollars, not nine million dollars?
Right, but we're presenting the entire project.
Okay.
So that, to put it in context.
Okay, just clearing that up.
Perfectly appropriate, Mr. Huether. Further discussion under Article Eleven. I hear a voice. Yes, ma'am. You need to take a microphone, please. Right up here, or in the middle, as you prefer.
First of all, I would like to say I support...
I know who you are.
Oh, I'm Janet Whitmore.
Thank you.
I support this, but I'm curious, I have a question about the materials that are being used and the longevity. You mentioned Aztec, which I'm aware of, but the siding itself, what is the longevity? Because I think the quality that we use is very important, that it lasts, and so that we're not facing renovations, say, in another twenty, twenty-five, thirty years. Can you answer that for us? Thank you.
Mr. Troy care to respond to Ms. Whitmore's question?
Absolutely. Our school building committee totally agrees with the comments of the previous speaker. We are going to, we haven't made a final decision on the color and the actual materials we're going to be using, but it will be synthetic composites that last a long, long time. Back when this was done in the mid-nineties, there was an overemphasis on the building looking like Chatham and using cedar shingles, and obviously, they didn't stand up to the test of time. So our consulting architects and engineers are really doing a deep dive into the options that we have. We had some samples outside the building that had been there for a few weeks for the community to see, and all of those are composite materials that would last a long time.
Thank you, Mr. Troy. Further discussion. If not, we'll put the matter to a vote. We paid for the electronic systems, so we may as well try it out. We'll vote electronically, under the motion as offered by Mr. Dykens, under Article Eleven. If you're in favor, vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no. Someone's gotta come check, but try it, and wait a second for the okay, because, again, when we all vote at once, it can sometimes take a few seconds to register, but a gentleman is on his way to see you. You could, there, there we go. All set, ma'am? Okay. Mr. Sample, anyone there in that room who was not voted? Another voting issue here, apparently.
We have a couple of people that we're checking on now.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone need assistance with their clicker in there, Paul?
We have someone here to take care of that.
Okay, good. Please let me know when that's resolved. We're finishing up one right here as well.
We have a couple more.
We have apparently a couple more. Well, he'll take you one by one. Gentleman right here.
We are all set in here, Bill.
Thank you. We're almost done here, I think. We all set in this room as well? Anyone with a problem in the, one more? He's all set, if you were.
It's okay.
Yep. Please, yeah, please don't hold the button. Click it and wait. I'm asked to advise you. All right, we will now close the vote, display the tally, which is five hundred and two in favor, twenty-six opposed. Thank you very much. Article Twelve. Thank you. Article Twelve was carried under the consent calendar. Article Thirteen, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate or transfer three hundred fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars for the purpose of funding labor contracts with a couple of municipal associations, for a motion, Mr. Matters.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the sum of three hundred and four thousand dollars be raised and appropriated to fund salary increases and other post, and other cost items resulting from contract settlements by and between the Town of Chatham and the Chatham Municipal Employees Association, CMEA, in the amount of three hundred and four thousand dollars, and to authorize that the town accountant to allocate such sums to the appropriate operating budget. And to meet this appropriation, the town raised three hundred and four thousand through taxation. And two, I move that the sum of ten thousand, five hundred dollars be raised and appropriated to fund salary increases and other cost items resulting from contract settlements by and between the Town of Chatham and the Chatham Managers Association, CMA, in the amount of ten thousand, five hundred dollars, and to authorize the town accountant to allocate such sums to the appropriate operating budgets. And to meet this appropriation, the town raised ten thousand, five hundred dollars through taxation.
Thank you, Mr. Matters. Finance Committee recommendation, Ms. Madison.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The collective bargaining agreements between the Town of Chatham and two of its municipal employee unions expired in June of two thousand and twenty-four. Our town manager and Megan Downey, our Director of Human Resources, successfully negotiated a three-year extension of the union contract. This article reflects the incremental costs resulting from that negotiation. The Finance Committee voted unanimously to support this article.
Thank you, Ms. Madison. Further discussion under Article Thirteen. If not, to make sure we got our glitches fixed, we will vote electronically on this. If you're in favor, we'll open the vote, and if you're in favor, vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no. Again, if you don't hold the button, it will work better, and if you wait a couple of seconds, it seems to read that okay perfectly well. I would also observe to the people standing by the side door that there are quite a few seats in front of me, on either side, if you'd like to come and rest your bones. Anyone with any trouble voting? No hands raised? Well, we have two, he'll be right with you. Two down here. And one more right behind you. All set? Anyone who hasn't voted? You have a problem? All right. One more. I'm sorry? I have no idea. Please take the microphone, or I'll have someone...
Jurisprudence. We had an issue with the clicker, but it's okay. The okay sign showed up after about five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Erickson.
So thank you.
Thank you. That's what I had suggested might be the case. If you be patient, it will show up. We will now close the vote. Display the total, please. The vote is four hundred and seventy-one in favor, four hundred and fifty-six opposed. Article Thirteen is passed. Four, no to what? Oh, I'm sorry, Article Thirteen? No, that's correct. Four seventy-one to fifty-six. Isn't that what I said?
I thought it was. I thought you did.
The vote is four hundred and seventy-one in favor and fifty-six opposed. I thought I had said so. Article Fourteen, the Water Department Operating Budget, for a motion, Mr. Shell.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to appropriate five million, one hundred and six thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars for direct costs, and further, that an additional three hundred and forty-one thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars be transferred to the general fund to be applied to overhead and indirect costs associated with the Water Department Operating Budget of the town for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and twenty-five, for the purposes and in the amounts designated in the column titled, quote, "Proposed Water Budget FY Two Thousand and Twenty-Six," unquote, of Article Fourteen of the warrant. And to meet said appropriation, the town raises, raise five million, forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars through water receipts and raise four hundred thousand dollars through taxation, for a total of five million, four hundred and forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Shell. Finance Committee recommendation, Mr. Doan.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article Fourteen provides the operating and capital funding for the town's water department. The five million, four hundred and forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight in funding will fund the department's operation for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six, and allow the department to continue to invest in Chatham's water supply and distribution system. The Finance Committee voted unanimously to support Article Fourteen.
Thank you, Mr. Doan. Further discussion under Article Fourteen. There is none, we'll do this as a voice vote. All in favor of the motion as offered by Mr. Shell, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. So voted unanimously. Article Fifteen, the Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan Authorization, for a motion, Mr. Macastro.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to appropriate three million, one hundred and sixty-two thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars for the purpose of funding the FY Two Thousand and Twenty-Five Capital Budget in the column titled, quote, "FY Two Thousand and Twenty-Six Proposed," quote, of Article Fifteen of the warrant. And to meet said appropriation, the town transfer two million, five hundred and seventy-five thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars from free cash, seventy thousand dollars from Waterways Improvement Fund, one hundred and thirty thousand dollars from the PEG Capital Access Fund, twenty-five thousand dollars from Sales of Graves and Lots Fund, three hundred and sixty-one thousand, seven hundred dollars from prior year articles, Article Twenty-Six, in your town meeting, two thousand and twenty-four.
Thank you, Mr. Macastro. Finance Committee recommendation, Mr. Papalardo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee voted nine to zero to recommend the article.
Thank you, Mr. Papalardo. Further discussion under Article Fifteen. If not, we'll put the matter to a vote. We'll do a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. So voted virtually unanimously. Article Sixteen, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate or transfer sum of three million, four hundred thousand dollars for improvements at the transfer station on Sam Rider Road, for a motion, Mr. Matters.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town raise and appropriate four hundred thousand dollars through taxation and transfer three million dollars from free cash, for a total amount of three million, four hundred thousand, for the purpose of paying costs associated with redesign, renovation, construction, and equipping the town's transfer station located at ninety-seven Sam Rider Road, and for the payment of all other costs incidental and related thereto, to meet this appropriation.
Thank you, Mr. Matters. Finance Committee recommendation, Ms. Sprague.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee has followed this process all the way to the point where we insisted on breaking it up and not funding it all at once, but in phases. So we recommend this unanimously for the town meeting to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Sprague. We'll now recognize our DPW Director, Mr. Failey.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article Sixteen is for the capital project transfer station improvements. Phase two at the transfer station addressed an old outdated garage and the working conditions for staff who are working out of a cramped space adjacent to the tipping building. Demolition of the old garage began in the fall, and work continues on the new building with occupancy expected this summer. Phase one at the transfer station addresses deficiencies with the recycling area. The design was revised to lower costs, reduce impacts to the stump dump, which is the large area within the red circle, improve efficiencies based on transfer station staff interviews, and also, the revised design added improvements to the tipping floor. The tipping floor is the big blue building. This building receives all commercial and residential solid waste in Chatham. Under this article, we plan to rehave the concrete floor. As you can see in the picture to the right, the concrete is deteriorating and rebar is exposed. This not only creates a tripping hazard, it has damaged the tires in the loader, and the crevices allow for bacteria growth, which is a health and sanitary issue and makes it difficult to keep odors down. This map is in the large layout of the proposed transfer station. You can see phase two... You can see phase two, the tipping, where the current garage building is, the tipping floor, the gatehouse, the swap shop, and finally, the recycling area. The area on top of the stump dump is reserved for brush and leaves and things that don't have an impact below grade. We revised the compactor container layout. Both sides mirror each other, which allows for greater number of customers. So what will this cost? Well, $650,000 we still have remaining after phase two. When we add the phase one construction, tipping floor repairs, administrative and contingency costs, that leaves $3.4 million needed for construction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Failey. Further discussion under Article 16. Ms. Gibbs.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Elaine Gibbs. When phase one and two renovations are complete, Chatham's taxpayers will have spent $8 million on the transfer station. Using free cash is not free. It's money previously appropriated from other budget items that have not been spent and only require a majority vote instead of two-thirds. I think it is inappropriate on a project of this size. A good portion of this proposed phase is nothing more than a Band-Aid. Chatham's become a regional transfer station, which we never agreed to. Commercial haulers bring trash and construction materials to Chatham, as has been admitted by other towns, including Harwich, because it's cheaper for them to let Chatham haul it to Falmouth or Off Cape instead of their towns. Brewster doesn't allow commercial haulers at all. The tipping floor of the blue building has been ruined by heavy equipment from removal of huge amounts of trash and construction material damaging to the floor. It will happen again in five years if we don't put regulations in place first. I'm voting no on this article unless the commitment is made today by the town that the following regulations will be put in place as safeguards, where commercial haulers sign for each delivery that it is only Chatham wastes their hauling, with audits by town personnel of disposed materials to make sure that is the case, with fines or loss of permits if the commercial material and trash is not from Chatham. All recommended by the Board of Health. We are effectively spending a huge amount of money to save money for surrounding towns, and I believe it needs to stop. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibbs. Further discussion under Article 16. Not, the motion is before you, as is as offered by Mr. Matters. We will vote electronically. Please open the vote on Article 16. And you may now cast your vote. Yes, if you're in favor, Mr. Nacastro has motion. No, if you are opposed. And again, please be patient for the okay to show up, but feel free to let us know if there's an issue. Anyone who has not voted? Not, we will close the vote. Display the tally. The vote is 339 in favor, 184 opposed. The article is passed. Article 17, let's see if the town vote to appropriate the sum of $5 million from free cash for the purpose of expanding and renovating the existing Center for Active Living on Stony Hill Road. For a motion, Mr. Nacastro.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer $5 million from free cash for the purposes of expanding and renovating the existing Center for Active Living, CFAL, located at 193 Stony Hill Road.
Thank you, Mr. Nacastro. Finance Committee, recommendation, Ms. Madison.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As it has become abundantly clear that voters reject spending for a new facility, the proposal before you appears to be a reasonable compromise and an acceptable solution. Excuse me. Supporting the seniors of this town who crave a more usable and utilitarian building, the Finance Committee recommended approval of this article with a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you, Ms. Madison. Our town manager, Ms. Goldsmith.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Before we begin the details of this article, I want to emphasize two points. First, this project requires only a majority vote today. No ballot question will follow. And second, there's no borrowing involved. If approved by the town, the town will fund it directly through available free cash. What we bring before you today is a project concept number five since 2019. It's a pragmatic, cost-conscious approach. Rather than building new, we are expanding and renovating the existing facility at 193 Stony Hill Road to 10,191 building area square feet with 47 parking spaces to better serve nearly a quarter of our year-round residents while reducing the cost and environmental impact compared to earlier concepts. I'll walk through the project overview. And our Director of Community Services, Leah, and our Project Administrator, Terry, are available to answer any questions. Pictured here, the left side highlights the lack of space in the main floor dining room area with a maximum current occupancy of 28 and a typical waitlist of nine. See the column in the middle surrounded by familiar faces holding champagne flutes, non-alcoholic, of course. On the right is the second floor media lounge. The other program room has limited headspace and constrained movement. Participants in that room are capped at 15 and typically a waitlist is additional 12 people. The existing building is the top photo and the bottom photo is the conceptual design. The project involves both expansion and renovations to the existing building, adding 22% more space. Expansion areas are focused on improving the functionality of existing program spaces and improving storage and safety code compliance for better delivery of services. By adding dormers, expanding the multipurpose rooms, including the kitchen area, creating a new front entrance and bigger lobby, installing covered lower-level access ramps and associated site improvements, provide the framework for better meeting the CFAL's programming needs over existing conditions. The project will also incorporate energy efficiency and sustainability measures and will seek incentives and grants to offset the total cost. The proposed site improvements provide for more formalized parking spaces from a total of 22 plus overflow on the grass to a total of 43 spaces. It also provides for traffic pattern efficiencies, improved parking lot grading and more level access and flow. Two new handicap spaces are located in the front and the final design will look to increase handicap spaces adjacent to Stony Hill Road. This is all on town property, so no loss of spaces for the neighboring condos. And on this schematic design, the area in yellow shows the left side of the building, which is an addition. On this basement or lower level, the proposed improvements address existing constraints and the yellow area reflects proposed expansion. This information is not new. We had presented it in January. So if you can't see the slides, I apologize, but I'll certainly highlight the expansion and improvements. So with this on the lower level basement level, it's going to have a creation of covered access from the outside lower-level parking lot, which does not exist, and provides space for bus drop-off. It will also provide for the removal of five structural columns limiting functionality of programming services, addition of bathrooms where currently none exist, creation of two storage areas to provide program storage space, reconfigured to host the supportive Adult Day program on this level. It will provide a dedicated room for fitness classes and enhancement of natural life via larger window wells. This is the first floor, and again, the yellow area reflects the proposed expansion. The proposed improvements provide for an addition of a new entrance area to improve access and provide for a dedicated reception area. Also provides for a larger dining area, removing columns, so that the maximum capacity currently at 30 will jump to 50 with the renovations. There's also new storage areas and expanded kitchen by eight feet, reconfigured office space, meaning current staffing needs, and modernization of the elevator. This is the proposed conditions for the second floor, the top level. The improvements include use of new dormers to increase usable floor area and headroom for an enlarged conference room and media lounge program room, which currently has a 15-person cap. It provides for safer emergency access to lower levels via new interior emergency egress stairwell, the creation of new office space, and reconfigured more functionality programming space for the library. What is presented today is a conceptual design, not a full schematic design. So design contingencies and escalation costs are built into the budget. Construction hard costs with contingencies is estimated at $3,991,623. Project soft costs with contingencies is estimated at $1,837. This includes the cost for a temporary relocation to the community center, estimated at $117,000. Staff has been planning this transition since January. CFAL participants will have a separate reception check-in area at the community center with Maddie, who you all know, and will also have a small library there. In addition, the other CFAL offerings, period, would also have, in addition to the CFAL offerings, the Adult Day program will be located at the community center club room. Total estimated project cost is $5 million. The project is funded by available free cash with no impact to the tax rate. Further, there is no impact to our AAA bond rating as the potential use of free cash for all capital projects presented today was disclosed to the rating agencies last month. Using free cash saves approximately $2.3 million in interest cost had the town borrow the funds for 20 years at an estimated interest rate of 4.5%. Here is the proposed schedule. We have initiated the procurement process for the architect and the project manager, awaiting town meeting approval to finalize. The plan would be to good forbid, in July, for construction and award the contract and have the contractor begin on August 18, 2025. The target move of temporary CFAL operations to the community center on August 19, 2025, after the summer camp program ends. Anticipated construction is 43 weeks and the CFAL return to occupancy on or about June 12, 2026. CFAL programs currently held at the community center will also return to the CFAL. In closing, this design uses what we have, adds only what is necessary, and reflects the town's continued commitment to supporting our residents as they age safely, actively, and with dignity. By using available free cash, we avoid long-term interest costs and by investing now, we avoid the higher construction cost for waiting. Even if you never visited the CFAL or don't see yourself as someone who would, this project is about ensuring when you, a neighbor, or a loved one is ready, the doors are open, the space is welcoming, and the programs are there to support healthy, active aging in Chatham. Thank you for your consideration, and we welcome your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Goldsmith. Yes, ma'am.
This is not a question. This is just a statement, and it's no. The current...
If you'd be kind enough to state your no.
I'm sorry. I'm Mary Byrne. I'm a 19-8 graduate of Chatham High School. My mother lives up the street. She's 99. So obviously, we have some interest in services for the aging, but you're saying that the current square footage is $8,035, excuse me, $8,035 square feet. You're going to spend $5 million to increase the space by 1,400 square feet? I don't know. Just sorry. No. Everybody else may have a different opinion. I support services for seniors, but this is ridiculous.
Thank you, Ms. Byrne. Further discussion. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Burke.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, for my opportunity to speak. My name is Pat Burke, and I am the Chairperson of the Chatham Council on Aging Board of Directors. I'd like to thank Jill for her comprehensive overview of the Center for Active Living renovation. Our Board of Directors voted unanimously to support the renovation. It is our belief that the renovation will designate a specific space for our Ridesco Respirant Adult Day program while enhancing our programming and outreach capabilities. The Chatham senior community will hopefully benefit from these services and programs. I spend a lot of time at the Center for Active Living, and I know how hard everyone works to make the senior community welcome. I hope you are able to support this article. Thank you very much for your time. It is greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Ms. Burke. Ms. Whittmore.
Yes, Janet Whittmore. Again, as many of you know, I'm a registered nurse that's worked in this community, taking care of many elderly people. My parents also, at a certain point, required care in extra care because many times the caregivers really get burnt out and need help. So the services that the COA is providing is vital. First of all, I want to stress the issue that we are a retirement community, primarily. There are more of us dying each year than there are babies being born. So the COA is vital to our community. The mean age of our citizens is 67.4 years old. Now, I was taking care of one of the elder members of the board, so I had privy to sit in the board meetings. And one of the things that I found out is that they want to take a building that... And I think some transparency needs to be opened up here. The building was functionally ready to fall down because of lack of maintenance. The building still remains, I feel, inadequate. When you want to put elder people to be cared for in a basement with no place to look out? When you want to take a program and you're just putting a Band-Aid on it? I am really truly disappointed in our select board and not being able to come up with a better idea. We have, Chatham has a lot of land. Could I see by a vote of hands, how many people are aware of the Golden Circle? Does anybody here know what the Golden Circle is? It's a body of land that was purchased by the town for a very high price at one point. It's that wooded area between... It's that wooded area between Old Queen Anne Road and Training Field Road. At the top of that road, be a wonderful place for a council and aging building. We still are not going to have enough parking. The parking's ridiculous. I utilize the Council of Aging myself because I am an elder. Anyway, I'm against this. I think it's wrong. I think the town deserves a state-of-the-art facility to care for us. And when you look at us, you know, you see the sea of gray hair, you know? And anybody thinks that, oh, they're not going to need the services, I want to tell you, you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whittmore. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Debbie Hagan. I live in South Chatham, and I frequent the Council on Aging on a regular basis. I want to speak in favor of the article, and I want to speak in favor because the services that I have received in the last almost two and a half years have saved my life. I was an active person who was going into business and taking care of everything that I could do, and then my husband died suddenly. And I have to tell you on a personal basis that the men and women who are providing the services there are doing service that is above and beyond the quality. Is this a perfect plan? No. I stood here with all of you, and I voted for two new buildings that you didn't want to fund. This is not the most positive place, but I speak against those who have not been to there. We need a program that they can have. They have added an adult program, and they are going to be using the bottom half of the building, which we haven't been able to use because we've been trying to get a new building. I think it's past time for us to fund a program that is being done with incredible human services, incredible customer service, which is rare. I'm 77 years old. I am not able to go to any of the other kinds of facilities that the town provides. But I will tell you that I believe in this service. Yes, $5 million is a lot of money, but it is less money than is being allotted now. And if you want to wait, go ahead and wait. But there's a hell of a lot of us that are not going to be here next year. So I would just ask, please, consider, if you're having a negative vote, please consider those of us that are using it that really want it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hagan. Anything new to add to the discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Ellen McKeev from Chatham. I'm a little bit concerned that this discussion is becoming something of a referendum on the value of a center like this. I don't think there's anybody, or very few people here, that don't feel strongly that we should have absolutely the best services and resources for our older population, of which I am one of them. What I think that we should all have to consider is something that, actually, I think the very first speaker at this meeting expressed was, is this really a conservative? Are we looking at this in terms of a conservative light? $5 million is just a huge amount. And I just would, if there's somebody here that could speak to this, speak to the rigor in which this figure was determined. Again, I just want to say I have absolutely no issue with making this center really what it should be. But I'm just concerned about that $5 million price tag. And very frankly, we have this free cash, and I'm just worried that we're working into this number backwards instead of taking a very, very disciplined look at what the money is that we need and then allocating that much for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McKay. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Anne Dixon, and I live in Chatham. I've said this for the last five years. I am now 68 years old. I'll be 69 in June. I'm in the middle of the baby boomer generation. Is this the most ideal, like another one said? No. But it is a big improvement, not just for the current people, and as that last lady said, many of them will not be here, but regardless. But we got to do something here, people. We spend money on a lot of other things, which is good for this town, and $5 million and the improvements, if you had been at the meetings with the architects and that sort of thing, it will just make a world of difference for the usage of that building, which is very overcrowded for many, many years. So I changed my mind. I admit it. And when I went to those meetings, and I think we should approve this, one for all, and be done for it for now, and it will serve a lot of people in the next few years. Thank you.
Thank you. My sense is that you may be ready to vote. And I would entertain a motion, if need be, I would entertain a motion, previous question. About six people are ready to make it. But we can dispense with that unless there is a need for a vote to cut off debate. And I think there is not. I think you are ready to vote. So the motion before you is that offered by Mr. Nacastro. The town vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $5 million from free cash for the purposes of expanding and renovating the existing Center for Active Living at 193 Stony Hill Road. We will now open the vote, and we will allow 30 seconds for this. That was more than 30 seconds. Is there anyone who has not yet voted? If not, we will close the vote and display the tally, 440 in favor, 88 opposed. Article 17 passes. I rarely take issue with anything a voter says, but I am confident, Ms. Hagan, that all of you who are here today will be here a year from now. I certainly hope so. Article 18, to see if the town vote to appropriate the sum of $32 million for paying costs for expansion of our wastewater or sewage treatment program. For a motion, Ms. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I moved that the town vote to appropriate $32 million for the purpose of paying costs of the design renovation and construction of various projects involving wastewater, collection facilities and systems, including but not limited to land acquisition costs, property damage claims, and facilities for surface water nutrient management, purchase of sewer grinder pumps, and for the payment of all other costs incidental and related thereto. And that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the select board is hereby authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 7, 1, or pursuant to any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, provided, however, that the borrowing authorization hereunder is contingent upon passage of a so-called debt-exclusion referendum vote pursuant to the Chapter 59, Section 21(c) of the general laws, also known as Proposition 2 and 1/2, and further that the select board is authorized to apply for and accept any grants or contributions that may be available toward the cost of said project from the federal government, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, or otherwise.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Finance Committee recommendation, Ms. Andres.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee continues to recognize the importance of water as our most valuable resource. It's not hyperbole to say that water is our lifeblood. We are a blue economy, from our tourism to fishing to real estate of values. Clean water is essential, not only our drinking water, but the groundwater that flows through our freshwater ponds and into our coastal abeyments. Nitrogen enters groundwater through our septic systems, and it takes years, even decades, to reach our coastal waters, where it causes deleterious algal blooms that harm marine ecosystems. It's important to continue our sewer-ing efforts in earnest with the knowledge that it will improve water quality and benefit the community in years to come. The Finance Committee, with eight members present, voted seven in favor with one abstention in support of this article.
Thank you, Ms. Andres. Our DPW Director, Mr. Failey.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So Article 18 is the wastewater project expansion for $32 million. It's also ballot question one in the annual town election, and this does require a two-thirds vote. This map highlights sewer expansion in Chatham. The dark blue areas are within Phase 1. The light blue areas are considered Phase 2. The areas in red are areas where sewer has already been completed, and the areas in green are currently under construction or actively in design. Since 2010, we have spent approximately $135 million on sewer expansion or rehabilitation projects. This includes projects currently under construction. This map highlights the next area of focus for sewer expansion. They are known as Areas 1F. These areas continue to address nitrogen removal, especially in our southern abeyment areas. We are also focusing on expanding our gravity sewer network with an eye towards future needs with pump station locations located in strategic areas. We submitted the state revolving fund application last summer in the amount of $31,190,000. Chatham ranked third on the SRF intended use plan with 554 points out of a possible 599 points. With this approval, we need to submit proof of funding to the state by June 25 of this year, which is why we're asking for this approval at town meeting. We also need to submit a draft design plan by October 1 of this year for Phase 1F1, or the SRF funding is pulled. We were recently notified that in addition to our success at the state level, we will receive a subsidy from the Cape Cod and Islands Water Protection Fund in the amount of $7,797,500. That's money we will not have to pay back and will help offset our borrowing authorization. Approximately $2 million of this $32 million request will go toward the purchase of residential grinder pumps for those properties that need them. This piece was intentionally excluded from the SRF submittal. So this request addresses design and construction for Contract 1F1. Contract 1F1 addresses nitrogen reduction in Oyster Pond with the Cedar Street Pump Station and sewer-ing the surrounding neighborhood. We plan to begin construction in 2026 with a proposed tier construction schedule. Also under Contract 1F1, we'll be tying in some of the smaller neighborhoods that were passed over when the gravity trunk line was installed along Route 28. The majority of these properties here, shown in green, will have gravity sewer connections. We also plan to advance the design of Contract 1F2. This project would aim to reduce nitrogen loading in the Oyster River with several smaller pump stations. This will be a mix of both gravity and low-pressure sewer with an SRF application planned for next year and an anticipated construction beginning in 2027. Also, as part of 1F2, we would tie in the Katy Ford neighborhood just off of George Ryder Road. All of these areas will focus on reducing nitrogen in the southern abeyments, will help connect additional areas within Phase 1, and will help close the loop on these and other previously identified areas to help ensure we meet the town's commitment to nitrogen reduction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Failey. Further discussion under Article 18. Ms. Gibbs, and then Mr. Buckley, and then the gentleman in the rear.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator, Elaine Gibbs. I find this process a little frustrating based on how this article has been written. Every few years, we've been asked to appropriate about $32 million to continuing the sewer infrastructure in Chatham. Since 2010, we've appropriated probably over $150 million, not including the actual facility. It was broken into two phases. Phase 1 was to have two-thirds of the properties in Chatham, which include single-family, multifamily, institutional, industrial, and commercial, about 5,300 properties connected to the sewers to reduce nitrogen by FY '30, which is three years from now. So far, less than 800 have been connected, yet every one of us has been paying for it, many in this room who will likely never be sewed. And buried in this article, even though it's been mentioned here, are the grinder pumps for a select group of people. The select board approved the grinder pump policy rather than bringing it to town meeting. And in that, the article appropriates $7,000 for grinder pumps and $2,000 for installation for those who need a grinder pump. This is just the beginning. There are plans by the group to come back to taxpayers to also pay for the town to service the pumps on private property and to potentially buy generators to keep them running. Grinder pumps should have been a separate article for a vote up or down by the town. It is not need-based, and it is financed through 2055, well beyond the 2040 deadline, where the entire town was supposed to be sewed. Most of us here likely won't be around for that. I believe that that portion of this article is discriminatory and unprecedented. Many homeowners will have significant costs to connect, including those with rear lots requiring trenching, impacting their driveways, their irrigation systems, their landscaping, replumbing of their homes, with no such financial reimbursement. Liability to the town from potential lawsuits for the inequities and property damage are inevitable. To spend this kind of money, when we have hundreds of millions of dollars ahead of us for drinking water, new wells, increased storage capacity, well repairs, and over 3,000 properties that need infrastructure to complete Phase 1, again, which should have been done in three years from now, is financially foolhardy. We still haven't been provided with those actual projected costs, despite repeated requests. Need-based financing and 0% loans should be the focus for a comprehensive plan for all of us, for all homers, not picking and choosing select groups who speak the loudest. So unless someone's inclined to remove the grinder pumps from this article to vote up or down separately, I'm personally voting no, because these are the kinds of things that happen. We all want the town to be sewed. To say that we have to do this now because it's due on June 25, well, where has the planning been up until this point to give us the opportunity and to get us the data? I've been asking for three years for financial projections on how much it's going to cost to complete two-thirds of the town, and I still don't have them. You still don't have them. And I think we have a right to know. It will be in the hundreds of millions of dollars, and that's what we have in our future. And I think that's the way you should plan financially for a town, not in bits and pieces, not for special groups, but to have a plan for everybody so that we can all benefit. And since you're paying for the sewer and may never get sewed, I think you have a right to know where the body's going. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibbs. Mr. Buckley, and then that gentleman, then Mr. Taylor. Mr. Buckley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Stephen Buckley, and I'm a property owner, and I have a grinder pump already. And I'm wondering if the stipend that is going to be, that may or may not be accurate according to the previous speaker, if there could be some clarification as to whether people who already purchased or have installed a grinder pump will be treated just as if they had put it off and not done it. So that's a question of clarification. It's not clear from the explanation in the warrant, so I was hoping some clarification could be provided on that point.
Anyone care to respond to Mr. Buckley's query about those who have already purchased grinder pumps? grinder pumps? Ms. Goldsmith.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Okay, here it goes. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and Mr. Buckley. Yes, there was consideration in the first reading of the grinder pump policy that there would be a reimbursement. The amount to be reimbursed is still under some discussion. Right now, we've, we've estimated that the grinder pumps would cost $7,000. So it's a process that we need to look at to see if, if someone who had to, had to install a grinder pump because of a town required low-pressure system installation, that we would look at what someone had paid versus the $7,000 that we're seeking to have as a stipend. So there's still some more discussion on it. First reading of the policy occurred just about a month ago, and the Select Board will consider, continue to review it.
Okay. And just as a comment of that, I think that if it's a one-time stipend or payment, that it be, that everyone be treated the same regardless of what was installed 10 years ago and having to pull out receipts that may not exist and so forth, just the idea that there should be a flat stipend for each, for each homeowner. That's my thought. And I, so I don't know if what, I'm still trying to figure out whether or not to vote for or against it, so thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you, Mr. Buckley. The gentleman I was about to recognize, Mr. Crawford, is a non-voter, and he asked me earlier the process for non-voters to speak, and I told him it was up to the meeting. Is there objection to Mr. Crawford speaking? There is no objection. Mr. Crawford.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Scott Crawford from Squanto Drive, which is part of Phase 1F2 under this proposal. My more important qualification to speak today, though, is that about 50 years ago, I learned to swim at the town beach. At that age, the Oyster Pond seemed a very large body of water, and you had to be really brave to swim out through the deep water to get to the swimming platform. Once you got to the ladder, you climbed up with a sense of pride as if you had just climbed Mount Everest. You can imagine how sad it makes me to think, to learn that the town beaches had to be closed on multiple occasions in recent years because of all the pollution. And to state the obvious, that swimming platform is not a mountain, does not mark the high point of an Oyster River that flows relentlessly downward out to the ocean. Everybody knows the Oyster River spends half its day flowing inland with the tide, which makes it a terrible candidate to have so many frontline houses with septic systems and the terrible nitrogenous wastes and the problems that they cause. It isn't just the kids and the families at the beach that have disappointment. Common sense says we're doing terrible damage to the shellfish and the other aquatic life, to the grasses, to the trees, the birds, and the, and the whole beautiful environment. I'm getting old, but let's be honest, the wastewater project isn't that young either. There were sound reasons, including cost, to stretch it out over decades, but it has had the consequence that some of these highest priority, really environmentally urgent areas still have not been dealt with, and there's a need to deal with them now. Once the sewer connection is available, my family will not have to be asked twice. We will hook up as soon as possible. And it's worth mentioning that it's not just ours who directly connect through this proposal that benefit. My understanding, and the, the experts could speak to this, is that everyone is in danger of having penalties imposed by the state of high costs of having to upgrade their septic systems if we don't get on with this project. And it's my understanding that the $2 million about the grinder pumps is a very small fraction of the $32 million that's being proposed here. The great majority is to, is to remediate the urgent environmental issue that we have. We're so lucky to be the inheritors of this beautiful environment in Chatham. For a time, we've become its caretakers. Please join my family in supporting Article 18 to ensure we look after it for the generations to come.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Mr. Taylor.
Mr. Moderator, Members of Town Meeting, this, we need to move forward with our sewer, and the issue of controlling whether or not we pay for the grinder pumps now can be handled quite easily until the plan is fully fleshed out by deciding whether there'll be a policy to pay for those people that have already put them in. This can be resolved very easily, and I make a motion, Mr. Moderator, that the language in this article, including grinder pumps, be removed and any funding be removed until such time as an article can be brought in the future for further expansion of the sewer plan, when we can provide a comprehensive plan that discusses fair and equitable distribution of grinder pumps. And I move that we make such amendment.
To, thank you, Mr. Taylor. That would need to be in writing at some point, maybe you could sit down, Mr. Tolloman, but I think what we would be proposed to do is looking at page 43 of your warrant in the 1, 2, 3, 4, fifth line of the motion as offered by Ms. Davis, if, let me know if I'm correct, that the suggestion is to delete the words "purchase of sewer grinder pumps." And I don't know, very frankly, whether you want, I don't know what the amount is, I don't know whether you want to ascribe an amount to that amendment, proposed amendment.
Mr. Moderator, with the removal of the purchase of grinder pumps, I see no reason to
Thank you.
attempt to figure out the
Yep. Thank you. That makes it clear to me. Mr. Taylor has moved to remove from the motion as offered by Ms. Davis the words in the fifth line of her motion as printed "purchase of sewer grinder pumps," so that this article, if it, if the amendment passes and the article passes, there would not be, the funds would not be used for purchase of sewer grinder pumps.
Mr. Moderator?
Uh, you're Mr. Bergstrom.
Yeah, hi. I know a little bit about this. We've been, we've been discussing this for quite a few years. I guess it has to been now decades that we realized that the water quality in Chatham was deteriorating because of so many septic systems around the town. But we made a decision at that point that we were going to have to sewer part of the town, try to collect that and make sure that it didn't continue to deteriorate. Having made that decision, we realized it was going to cost a bunch of money, and believe me, we're good, we're lucky we made the decision when we did, because the towns that are facing this now have to pay two or three times as much as we have to pay. And we also made a decision that since everyone, see, you shouldn't see this as an article about sewer. This is an article about water quality. The whole purpose of this is to clean up restuaries. All right? Once we made that decision, we had to decide, since we all benefit from that, why not distribute it, the cost equally? Well, the cost is not distributed equally because some people have to pay that much more to hook up than others, even though they get the same, they get similar benefits. So the idea of paying for the grinder pumps is not we're doing anybody a favor. We're trying to, trying to put the cost of this relatively expensive septic system equally on people, so that some people aren't, some people aren't impacted more than others. I mean, if you, you have a house that's, you know, 60 feet away from the road, it may cost you $10,000 to hook up, I don't know what it costs, but if, if you happen to be sitting below the road grade, it could cost you $30,000. That's not fair. You're not getting that three times the benefit from the sewer system that the $10,000 person is. So I'm against this, as you called this, suggestion, amendment, if you want to call it, because I think that we should try to be as equitable as we possibly can. There were several articles coming forward that deal with people who are, can't afford their taxes and so on. We try to make it, you know, we try to make it easy for people here who, not everybody is a millionaire, not everybody has a million-dollar house, and some people, $10,000, $30,000, that's a lot of money. And so we try to be as equitable as possible, because as I say, it's about water quality. We're all going to benefit from it, and we should distribute the cost equally. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bergstrom. Ms. Sprague.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We have been studying these issues ever since we, the town first voted for sewer-ing the town. And as the reason we go on the schedule we do is that we're already behind. We never want one of you not being able to drink the water that comes out of your faucet. We never want one of you not to be able to flush your toilets. We can't wait for a few weeks or another town meeting to keep on the schedule, because this is not the last one. It goes on and on and on, because we want each citizen in this town to have clean, sanitary, drinking water, and sewerage. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Ms. Sprague. Further discussion, Mr. Phillips.
Billings Road, I can hear you now? Okay. Again, it's grinder pumps, sorry. I have a quick question. Are we set on purchasing the E1s, or can we look into the Primrose, which are more energy-efficient and have bigger holding tanks, which would make it so you wouldn't have to have a generator? Thank you.
Anyone with more knowledge than I, which is everyone, care to respond? Mr. Failey.
So our low-pressure sewer in Chatham is designed to accommodate the E1 grinder pump. So to add a different type of grinder pump would kind of complicate flows and things of that nature. So we prefer to go with the E1.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Question, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
There is an amendment on the floor, I believe?
They're, I'll paraphrase, because it's difficult to get to the, to the mic. Is there amendment on the floor? There is, and that will be the first thing on which we will vote.
Was it second?
It doesn't need to be. I, I appreciate the point, but as a matter of practice, we dispense with second. Ms. Segal. Ms. Segal has moved the previous question, which is motion to cut off debate. It is to cut off debate only on Mr. Taylor's suggested amendment. So we will now take a voice vote on cutting off debate of discussion of the amendment. You can talk further about the main motion if you'd like. All those in favor of cutting off debated the amendment say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. So voted by an almost unanimous vote. We will now vote on the amendment as offered by Mr. Taylor. And I think you already have it up there on the electronic screen, so we will vote electronically. If you support Mr. Taylor's amendment, which is to delete the words "purchase of sewer grinder pumps," you will vote yes. If you don't support Mr. Taylor's amendment, you will vote no. This is not the main article. This is just voting on Mr. Taylor's amendment. All those in favor of Mr. Taylor's amendment vote yes. And Mr. Semple, even though I don't call on you in every vote, if anyone in there is having trouble, I know that you will tell me.
He's having trouble.
Is there anyone who has not voted? One lady right here.
Well, and we have a couple in here, Bill.
Okay, and Mr. Semple has got some people in there. Yeah, I'll have to leave it open. So can, are we, you're all set? Okay. And Paul, will you please let me know when your matters are resolved?
We still have a couple, we still have a couple more.
Thank you. I would observe that even with occasional techno glitches, this is still much faster
We're still dealing with a couple more, Bill. We're all set, Bill.
Thank you. We'll close the vote and display the total. Vote is 213 yes, 281 no. The amendment does not pass. What is before you now is the main motion as offered by Ms. Davis, which requires a two-thirds majority. Is there further discussion?
So echoing, oh, sorry, Bill Glass, North Chatham. Echoing and perhaps seeking to amplify remarks of a previous speaker, and in the interest of promoting accountability from our leadership before this forum, I sort of read it, this previous speaker remarked that some hundreds of, let's call it, connections had been made, and plans or long-term projections were that there would be some 3,000 in four or five years. So could someone please inform the audience, where are we today versus the, the projections that were made when the plans were implemented, I think around 2010? My recollection was it was a 30-year project. 240 or some such million was the estimated cost. Are we on schedule and are we on budget versus the original projections? And if we're not, why not?
Mr. Failey, care to respond to Mr. Glass's question?
Sure, thank you. So in 2009, it was originally projected to be a 30-year project at a cost of $300 million. That was $2,009. Nothing was accounted for inflation. Currently, we have spent $135 million. We have over 1,000 connections at this point. We've built a lot of the infrastructure, and we're still working towards building the infrastructure to expand some of those smaller communities that haven't tied in yet. I don't have a cost estimate for the future. We are working on a map and a timeline that we can inform the public of exactly where we stand and when they can expect sewer to be connecting in their neighborhood. So we look at, we're looking at probably another 30 years from this point to sewer the entire town.
Okay, so my response to that is we're apparently well behind schedule, and for all we know, we could be wildly over budget, but we don't know. Is that, would you like to respond to that?
It will be over $300 million. I can, I can guarantee that.
Would it be 500 million? Would it be 400 million? Does anybody update those original projections?
We, we don't really ordinarily get into colloquies, so let Mr. Failey try to respond.
So even if we were to inflate the 300 million estimated in 2009 to today's dollars, I'm sure we'd be closer to the 400 to 50, $450 million range, roughly.
Okay, so my comment then to my fellow citizens is we need more accountability from our leadership on such grand, some such huge questions. And again, the lack of viewpoint diversity on our Finance Committee board in light of this complete lack of information is to me disappointing.
Thank you, Mr. Glass. Yes, ma'am.
Michelle Maloney-Kitts, Chatham. I'm here speaking on behalf of Friends of Chatham Waterways. Water is our most important, it's central to everything that we value in this community, and this sewage system is an incredibly important part of moving forward. It is the number-one intervention to improve the quality of our water. We strongly encourage you to support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maloney-Kitts. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Previous question? Motion for the previous question, which is motion to cut off debate. It itself requires a two-thirds vote, but is not debatable. If you'd like to continue to talk about this article, vote no. If you're opposed, vote yes. All in favor of the motion, previous question, say aye. Those opposed, say no. So voted by, I think it was 400 and something to one. We will now vote on the main motion as offered by Ms. Davis. This will be an electronic vote. Is there anyone who does not understand on what we are about to vote? If not, we will open the vote. If you're in favor, vote yes. Please let us know if you have any trouble with the okay after you give it a couple of seconds. Mr. Semple, anyone in there who is not yet voted?
Just needed to be taken care of.
Thank you.
We are all set in here.
Thank you. Close the vote and display the total. The vote is 426 in favor. 75 opposed, more than the requisite two-thirds. Article 19 was carried on the consent calendar. Article 20, a sewer capital transfer from the wastewater capital stabilization fund. For a motion, Mr. Matters.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer from the wastewater capital stabilization fund $1,070,000 for system repairs to the original sewer collection in the amount of $170,000. Sage Harbor Pump Station, $700,000. And the replacement of the denitrification filter air system in the amount of $200,000.
Thank you, Mr. Matters. Finance Committee recommendation, Mr. Young.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. A while ago, we received from the town of Harwich some payments regarding their use of our sewer system. We chose to put that into our wastewater capital stabilization fund, and that is the source of the funding for this article. Finance Committee voted unanimously in favor of approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Further discussion under Article 20. This requires a two-thirds vote, but both local bylaw and statute allow me to declare a two-thirds vote, which I am inclined to attempt to do, if there is a two-thirds vote, via a voice vote. All in favor of the motion as offered by Mr. Matters, say aye. Those opposed, say no. So voted unanimously. We passed Article 21 and 22 on the consent calendar. Article 23, to establish a Chatham Sewer Assistance Program. For a motion, Mr. McCastro.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town transfer $50,000 from free cash for the purpose of funding a Chatham Sewer Assistance Program to provide financial assistance in cases of sewer connection hardship. Said program to be administered by the select board, which shall be authorized to develop rules and procedures for such administration.
Thank you, Mr. McCastro. Finance Committee recommendation, Ms. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee voted unanimously to support the establishment of a Chatham Sewer Assistance Program. Our commitment to protecting our water and creating the infrastructure for our future is important to everyone, but the individual cost can be a daunting budgetary prospect for some in our community. Our hope is to lessen the burden for those experiencing the biggest challenges paying for the mandatory connection. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shields. Further discussion under Article 23. Not with the matter we will vote, may a voice vote. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say no. So voted by a very substantial majority. Article 24, electronic visual speed display signs. For a motion, Mr. McCastro.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town raise and appropriate $66,000 for the purpose of the purchase-
Mic in front of you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town raise and appropriate $66,000 for the purpose of the purchase, placement, and operation of stationary and portable electronic visual speed display signs for motorists on various public ways in the town of Chatham, including all costs incidental and related thereto. And to meet this appropriation, raise $66,000 through taxation.
Thank you, Mr. Castro. Finance Committee recommendation, Mr. Dome.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I question why I'm speaking on this article, but that's all right. Article 24 will allow the town to acquire and deploy both fixed and mobile electronic visual speed display signs. It is anticipated that the deployment of such dynamic speed signs will contribute to the safety of our roads. The Finance Committee voted unanimously to support this article.
Thank you, Mr. Dome. My response is that because of the word, the word "dynamic" was in your report. No one is more dynamic than you, Tommy. That's why it's yours, Tommy. Further discussion under the article. Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, or good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I am Ann Thompson, Stage Harbor Road. My family and I have had property in this wonderful town for 73 years. I am here to request an amendment to warrant Article 24. It is a simple alteration, the removal of the words "stationary and," leaving only the words "portable electronic visual speed display." This amendment eliminates the inclusion of the permanent red painted tall poles with flashing green and red lights and canopies. Here are the reasons for this request. Number one, permanent pole visual speed signs do not slow traffic. Speed limit signs are more effective, and this is what we on Stage Harbor Road requested, a lowering of the speed and signs. Instead, the select board chose an entirely different solution, Article 24. We in no way support it as written and hope you will value our reasons and either vote no or to amend this article. Number two, permanent flashing pole signs are actually a dangerous distraction, especially for the elderly. Stage Harbor Road in summer has constant biking and walking traffic. That is enough of a distraction. Number three, the portable testers can be moved to areas most affected by high-traffic volume, depending on seasonal or monthly changes. They register actual auto statistics, while the permanent neon signs do not. The permanent poles are constantly flashing large red or green speeds of passing vehicles 365 days a year, 24 hours a day. After a vehicle has passed, they continue to register the speed, often until another car approaches. It is an endless stream of light. The permanent poles require full sunlight to activate, and Stage Harbor Road is a lovely shade tree road with almost no areas in full sun all day long. Stage Harbor Road is densely populated with homes sited close together. Because it is one of the oldest roads in town, many of the homes are placed close to the edge of the road, where a permanent flashing light would be visible to porch areas and even second-floor windows, and be just as visible to neighbors across the street. Most of all, after canvassing my neighborhood, no one wants permanent flashing lights all day and all night. We would very much prefer the portable low-slung testing displays that have been positioned at the Boy Scout Hall in the past and are not a permanent eyesore. We'd like to keep our historic streetscape attractive for those who live here and who walk and bike the loop every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Ms. Thompson has moved to amend the motion as offered by Mr. McCastro to remove the words "stationary and," so there will just be funding for just portable electronic visual speed display signs. Further discussion of the amendment or the overall issue? Mr. McCastro.
Mr. Moderator, this article was developed in consultation with the Police Department, and the intention behind including "stationary" as well as "portable" was to give discretion to the Police Department and flexibility. Given the motion and I, the amendment, motion to amend, and I appreciate the previous speaker's concerns, I would like to ask if the Chief Police would be willing to comment on whether this motion would limit or whether it would be acceptable to the Police Department.
Thank you, Mr. Castro. Chief Anderson of the Chatham Police Department. You must have been letting a lot of people off recently.
Ann, where did you go? Ann, all I can say is that Stage Harbor Road was a suggestion. It hasn't been determined that it would be one of the locations for a permanent fixture. I still support the idea of permanent fixtures, depending upon the roadway, the speeds, the amount of traffic, but we would certainly not just show up in your neighborhood and put a permanent street sign with a LED display outside of your home, outside of your bedroom window. We would certainly, we would certainly reach out to the neighborhoods that we were thinking about ahead of time. Go ahead.
You're gonna have to take the mic if you would.
Sure.
I did, I did ask Rob, because there are so few places where you get enough sun, and he never got back to me on, if, if we were chosen. Sorry, Rob, but it's key. I mean, we did not ask for it. We really would prefer not to have our street included.
I hear you loud and clear, and the issue of the canopy, we certainly wouldn't be removing any existing trees or branches or foliage to accommodate a permanent fixture. So I hope that answers your question. I hope it answers anybody else's questions.
Thank you, Ms. Wedmore. Thank you, Chief.
My question is $66,000. What is the statistics on these appliances, you might say, in actually slowing down traffic? Do we have any stats on that? Thank you.
Anyone care to respond? Chief Anderson.
I don't have specific statistics on the effect of the signs. What I do have is all of the signs purchased under this article would have the ability to be downloaded, whether they're fixed or movable. They would have Bluetooth capability. We could download the statistics. And what it does is it just better, provides us with better times and locations to conduct our enforcement. I hope that answers your question.
Yes, sir. You have to take the mic. Previous question?
Move the limit to-
Yeah, gentleman has moved to cut off debate. We would be voting to cut off debate only on Ms. Thompson's amendment, because that's what's on the floor before you. So the question now is for cutting off debate on Ms. Thompson's amendment. All in favor of the motion for the previous question to cut off debate, say aye. Those opposed, say no. So voted unanimously. We will now vote on Ms. Thompson's amendment. I will try a voice vote. Her amendment is to delete the words "stationary and," so that the appropriation would be for portable-only signs. All those in favor of the motion offered, the amendment is offered by Ms. Thompson, say aye. Those opposed, say no. My opinion, the noes have it. Is there a request for account? There is a request for account. We will now vote by electronic device on Ms. Thompson's amendment, which is the removal of the word "stationary and." If you're in favor of her amendment, vote yes. If you're opposed, no. And Chief Anderson is not looking at your clicker. And in the auditorium, Mr. Semple?
One that we need to count.
I'm sorry?
We have one more that we need to count.
One more. Okay.
We are all complete.
Thank you very much. We will now close the vote and display. The vote is 180 in favor, 297 opposed. The amendment is not adopted. What is before you now is the main motion as offered by Mr. McCastro. Further discussion? Yes, ma'am?
Well, you'll probably call me silly. I'm Ann Dixon. There are a lot of these around Harwich and Orleans, and they put some up on Old Queen Anne and Queen Anne, whatever, when they were talking about originally reducing the whole speed limit in the town and then abolished that. There's a really cute one up in Orleans that when you're going the speed limiter less, it has a thumbs up. I really like it. It makes me smile. But no, anyway. I-
They're bad jokes that I won't even attempt. Thank you very much. We will now proceed to vote, unless there is something new. To vote on the main motion as offered by Mr. McCastro, we will try a voice vote. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say no. So voted by a very substantial majority. If there is a request for account, I'll take it, request by any seven voters. If not, we will declare that Article 24 has been adopted. You have been here for two and a half hours. I think you deserve a five-minute break. So if you'd like to stand, use the facilities or otherwise, you may do so. We will be back in session at 1:40. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Please take your seats.
The Finance Committee recommended a vote of eight to zero in favor of the article.
Thank you, Mr. Papalardo. Chairman of our Airport Commission, Mr. Harrison.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This article is the annual request for the local share for capital improvement projects at the airport. These projects are funded predominantly by the FAA to 90 percent, Massachusetts Department of Transportation and Aeronautics Division at 5 percent, with the town appropriating a 5 percent balance. The local share for these projects leverages over $1 million of total cost. The effect on the tax rate is about a half penny on the dollar. The projects for this year increase safety and improve the airport's infrastructure. The NAVAid project is to change the navigation lage from the older incandescent lamps to the new LED-type lamp so they're more visible and will last longer. The parking lot rehabilitation is to improve drainage and to pave it. And the project for the rehabilitation and design and permitting for the main apron rehabilitation is something that happens every 10 years or so. So I appreciate your support, and contrary to what you may have read or heard, these projects do not expand the airport.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Further discussion under Article 26. Yes, ma'am?
I'm Harriet Proud, Chattock Place. I am asking you to vote no on Article 26. I would like to remind you that on October of 2019, the Cape Cod Chronicle informed the readers of the Chatham Airport Master Plan Expansion. The headline said, "Plans Call For A New $4.6 Million Terminal." This is the article. And to build two new hangar buildings. It went on to say that 39 of the existing hangar spaces are occupied, and the airport manager reported other aircraft owners have indicated they are interested in renting hangar space in Chatham. He said some of these owners are from the nearby airports, Hyannis, Martha's Vineyard, Nantucket. Yes, these pilots from Hyannis, Martha's Vineyard, and Nantucket want to rent hangars in Chatham. The new building will add 22 hangar spaces. Add these to the 39 hangars that we have. The Chatham Airport will have a total of 61 hangar spaces, an expanded airport. If you have any doubt that the 61 hangars could be rented, check out the Chatham Town website under the Hangar Information, Lease Agreement, and Waitlist. You'll find hangar waitlist of July 2024. Forty-nine individuals are listed on that list for the 22 new hangars. Last year, I stood before you to ask for a no vote for a similar airport article, and I began by saying Chatham residents have been misled by omission. Yes, last year, very important information known to the Airport Commission and the Select Board was not shared with the residents, and I provided that information. And yes, I want to make a point. This article this year includes part of the Airport Master Plan Expansion. In this article, in the Chronicle, the airport expansion would need construction of apron space. This space will make up for the tie-down spaces lost due to the change of the airport approaches. The article that you're voting on today, Article 26, states, "Design and permitting of the apron rehabilitation." Yes, this article is for the expansion of the airport. Every time the Select Board members place an airport article on the warrant, they are effectively approving of the airport master plan expansion. Chatham residents, whether they are near the airport or whether they are not near the airport, have serious concerns, noise, pollution, safety, or health. Chatham residents should vote no on this article and every future article on the airport until the Select Board sits down with us and meets us and agrees on the implications that the expansion of the airport will do. According to the... and should meet us. So please, last year, there was an overwhelming vote for the airport article, a vote of 306 noes and 158 yes. Let's do it again. That's a two votes against to one vote for the airport. Vote no on this article. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Proud. The gentleman in the blue, then Mr. Osteen.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Mike Cortese. I live in South Chatham. I'm on the Airport Commission, but I'm speaking as a citizen. Quite simply, Article 26 can be looked at as routine maintenance for maintaining safety and necessary repairs on the airport. It is not for expansion. We have a big enough ramp as it is, if I think. This is similar to repairing and maintaining our roadways, our waterways, stoplights. You can think of it as stoplights, stop signs, navigational buoys and lights. Planes are going to land day and night, so it's in our best interest as a town to provide the navigational lights, the glide slope indication, the windsock, which tells pilots where the winds are, rotating beacon, which differentiates the airport from the lighthouse, and other repairs to the ramp just to maintain the airport in the condition it is. This is also going to provide key maintenance to the runway and identifier lights, which help pilots navigate to the end of the runway and approach. The best part of this is we are only responsible for 5 percent of the total, and these items are in bad shape. I've seen it from the air and in the ground and definitely need repair. So thank you for your consideration and your time today.
Thank you. Mr. Osteen, and then Dr. Thompson. Mr. Osteen.
Thank you for the opportunity. I like to speak to my audience because that's who will decide the vote. Article 26 is asking for the town payers to pay the matching funds. Well, there's a conflict with Article 6. We have already voted, the town has, you taxpayers, voted for Article 6 for an amount of $150,000, and quoting from Article 6, they say that the revolving fund monies would cover expected expenses by, like, maintenance. And here are the key words, and matching funds for anticipated grants in fiscal 2026. So we have already approved that the revolving fund will pay for the $59,175 under Article 6. So how can they now go back to Article 26 and say, oh, wait a minute, we don't want to pay for that. Let's stick it to the town. Okay? So this is in direct conflict with Article 6 statement that what Article 6 is for. I agree with the previous speaker on the... I also question the matching funds of $8,000 and $8,750 for designing apron rehabilitation. Those matching funds equate to a job worth $375,000 for a design. And I question what could cost $375,000 to design everything? Well, that lady just told us why it's going to cost. The airport wants to build a new administration building, and they want to reconfigure basically the whole airport, and that's why it's going to cost $375,000 for the design. They are nickel-and-diming us, and they're not telling the truth. I have asked the Airport Commission for the last 15 years, tell me what the admin building would cost, and all I got was, oh, yeah, 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 we will tell you. Fifteen years later, they still haven't told me what they plan to build. The last Airport Master Plan said that the admin building would have a restaurant, would have a lounge for the pilots, for the pilote and the corporate jet, because they need a resting place. So the admin building will have a lounge for pilots and restaurants. I question also the airport, the parking paving. They want to repave that stone parking lot, gravel parking lot behind and pave it for $600,000. Yes, of course, town only pays $18,000, but that $600,000 is to pave that lot. Why are they paving it? For years and years, I have heard, not officially, but in airport meetings, they want to pave that so that the restaurant has parking. FAA has ruled that we cannot use grant money to pave parking lots if they're going to be primarily used for a commercial business. That restaurant at the airport is a commercial business, or a private, okay? It is not by one.
Excuse me, Mr. Osteen. We're approaching time.
Three minutes? Okay, thank you very much. Okay. In summary, I ask you vote no on this because you have already voted on Article 6.
Thank you, Mr. Osteen. Dr. Thompson.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. Mike Thompson, I can only endorse what Mr. Osteen has just said. Field lighting, beacon, windsock, very essential maintenance. They're not capital projects, as I see. Using almost 400 K for plans to repave, retarmack an apron is exorbitant. Using $600,000 to unnecessarily improve a small gravel parking lot is ridiculous. And as Mr. Osteen said, money in the revolving fund should be used for these expenses anyway. There is additional income coming in from the hangars at this point to make up that 150 K that was just voted for in Article 6. And finally, accepting $1 million of FAA money continues to put golden handcuffs on the air of town for another 20 years. So vote no for this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Mr. Law has moved the previous question, which is a motion to cut off debate. It itself is not debatable. The motion before you is to cut off debate. I know there may be some other speakers who'd like to talk further, but right now, the motion is on cutting off debate. If you're in favor of the motion to cut off debate, say aye. If you're opposed, say no. Clearly, a two-thirds majority in favor of the previous question, which is to cut off debate. We will now vote on the main motion as offered by Mr. Shell. The town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $59,175 for the purposes set forth in this article. We'll take an electronic vote. If you are in favor, vote yes. If you are opposed, vote no. Mr. Semple, status in the auditorium? Anyone who was not voted?
Couple more to go.
I'm sorry, I didn't...
We have a couple more to go.
One more to go. Okay, thank you. Be kind enough, please, to let me know when that's concluded.
Still working on it.
Thank you.
I, I, I think I'm at the end of my patience. If, Mr. Semple, what?
One more, one more to go here, we're getting there.
Well, all right, we're going to have to have a discussion with our vendor and with the staff about the system, because I am not satisfied. Whether it's using the auditorium, which is delaying things, I don't know, but this is not satisfactory. Thank you. Please close the vote and display the total. One hundred ninety-nine in favor, two hundred thirty-one opposed. The article does not prevail. Article, Article Twenty-Six does not pass. Article Twenty-Seven and Twenty-Eight were both carried on the consent counter. Article Twenty-Nine, Community Preservation Act, funding for an Affordable Housing Trust Fund, for a motion, Mr. Tennyson, the chairman of our CPC.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Gary Tennyson, the chairman of your hard-working Community Preservation Committee. In Article Twenty-Nine, the committee is recommending continued CPA funding for the Chatham Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer, in accordance with provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Forty-four B, Section Five, the sum of one hundred and forty thousand dollars from the Affordable Housing Reserves, and the sum of three hundred and sixty thousand dollars from Community Preservation Fund estimated revenues, for a total of five hundred thousand dollars, for the purpose of funding the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, including necessary costs and expenses related thereto, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Tennyson. Finance Committee, recommendation, Ms. Madison.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Acknowledging that there is little doubt about the need for affordable housing in Chatham, the Finance Committee joins with the Select Board and the CPC in unilaterally recommending approval for this article.
Thank you, Ms. Madison, for the discussion under Article Twenty-Nine. Yes, sir, Mr. Glass.
Bill Glass, you know me by now, North Chatham. I guess I get to be the skunk at the garden party on this particular issue.
A little closer to the microphone.
I'm sorry. So I think you've already heard my joke, so I'll go on. I acknowledge the good intentions of everyone on the issue of affordable housing, but I would like to share what I would consider my analytical, or economic analytical analysis of what we're doing. Two comments first. When the public sector interferes in private markets, you do so at your peril, because there's typically unintended consequences of the action. In this instance, I feel like, or I submit for everyone's consideration, when we subsidize housing for, let's say, lower-income half or of the distribution here, it's mostly the service industry where these people are employed. So when we subsidize housing for people to live here who otherwise would not, those people will accept employment in those industries at a lower wage than they otherwise would have. So one of the unintended consequences of us meddling in the housing market is that we depress wages for the entire hospitality industry, service people. I don't think that was your intention, but that's what you're doing. And who is capturing the benefit of that lower wage level in that sector? Well, it's the businesses in town, and it's the summer visitors who come and enjoy those This whole scheme is ill-advised, in my opinion, and I appreciate the opportunity to share my point of view. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glass. Further discussion.
Mr. Moderator.
Chatham has a housing crisis, not just for the service industry, but for our teachers, our firefighters, our, our commercial shell fishermen, our fishermen, our retired community. I urge you to vote yes on this.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Mr. Huether, and this lady, Mr. Huether.
John Huether. I do agree with Mr. Glass, you know, on most of what he said. The reason why I'm standing up here is because I'm so disappointed in this town for giving the Buckley property over to apartments. Apartments are not people that want to put down roots in a town. We not only have now proposed forty-eight or so apartments for part-time people, but we've lost that piece of land that could have been houses for the teachers, the firefighters, the police, the people that want to make this town their community. We now no longer have that. And I cannot, I will not ever vote for affordable housing money ever again.
Thank you, Mr. Huether. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, everybody. Paula Wiseman, North Chatham. We've been talking about this, of course, I, I haven't lived down here full-time, only for the past couple of years, but it's been, this has been talked about for quite a while. And the affordable housing is not affordable to teachers that they're proposing. I mean, some of us are average Joes. I couldn't afford this. I'm lucky I live down here, because, because we got in here at the right time, and we got a deal on a house. But that, that housing is not affordable to teachers, firemen, you know, the average Joes. We need to make it so it's affordable. This is not the right, the right bill for it. And I suggest you vote no.
Thank you, Ms. Wiseman. Further discussion. Yes, sir. Motion, previous question, was a cutoff motion to cut off debate. It itself is not debatable, it requires a two-thirds vote. If you're in favor of the motion to cut off debate, say aye.
Aye.
If you're opposed, say no. So voted by well over the two-thirds majority. We will now vote on the main motion as offered by Mr. Tennyson. Given my obvious ire with our electronic voting system, I'm going to try a voice vote. If there is a request for a recorder, or tell, a recorded vote, we will certainly take it, but we'll try a voice vote on the motion as offered by Mr. Tennyson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
In my opinion, clearly well more than the majority required. Is there a request for account? If not, there is not. We will deem Article Twenty-Nine to have passed and move on to Article Thirty, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from Community Preservation Fund estimated receipts funds for the restoration and preservation of stall.
There is a request for a vote from the auditorium.
It's too late, but are there seven standing in there now? Are there seven voters in the other room requesting account?
Yes.
Stand up and let Mr. Semple count you, please.
Yes, there are.
All right, we will, I will vary from what I am required to do, having declared the vote, but recognizing that there are people in the other room, we will now go back to Article Twenty-Nine. When you are ready, we are ready, and open the vote. If you're in favor of the motion as made by Mr. Tennyson under Article Twenty-Nine, vote aye, and if you're opposed, vote no. Is there anyone in the gymnasium who has not yet voted? Anyone in the auditorium who has not yet voted?
No, everyone has voted.
Thank you. We will now close the vote and display the tally. The vote is two hundred sixty-three yes, one hundred fifty no. Article Twenty-Nine is passed. Mr. Buckley, pointing information? Apparently not.
Okay, there we go. Thank you. Earlier in the meeting, Mr. Moderator, you said, you suggested people click and wait. And I would suggest that it might be more clear if they would press and hold the button.
Actually, I, I am advised that that causes problems.
Okay, I found it works for, for me. I hold it down until the okay comes up. I just wanted to point.
No, I appreciate it. I think what you're all looking for, however you do it, is until you get the word okay. But it sometimes can take a few seconds to do.
That's what I mean. Holding it for a few seconds produces the okay.
Briefly.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Thank you. Article Thirty, which I will not re, well, I should reintroduce, to see if the town vote to transfer funds from the Seek Community Preservation Fund for the preservation of the Stall neck murals for a motion, Mr. Tennyson.
Thank you. As the chairman indicates, this, this article would support the restoration and preservation of the Stall neck paintings, the beautiful paintings in the Atwood Barn. I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from Community Preservation Fund estimated receipts, four hundred and eight thousand dollars, for the purpose of funding restoration and preservation of the Stall neck paintings located at the Atwood Museum. This restoration project involves cleaning and restoring the Stall neck collection, retaining the same quality of backing to secure the paintings to the canvas in preparation of framing and glazing, replacing existing frames with newer, more durable frames, and installing high-end museum-quality plexiglass glazing to all the paintings. This includes the necessary costs and expenses related thereto, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Tennyson. Finance Committee, recommendation, Ms. Sprague.
Mr. Moderator, the Stall murals in the Atwood Museum is an artistic jewel for this town. I think we should vote to restore, to preserve it, so that our children and grandchildren can enjoy it as much as we do. So the Finance Committee voted in favorable of this article, and hope she will too.
Thank you, Ms. Sprague. Further discussion under Article Thirty. Yes, sir. It may not be necessary, but if you'd like to. We have a non-voter, Mr. Wright, who is the executive director, or whatever, of the Chatham Historical, Chatham Historical Society, and he would like to address the meeting briefly. Is there objection?
No.
Yeah, there is no objection. Come forward briefly. If I took a vote, which I would be required to do, the majority would allow him, so I recognize that one, one or two persons may have had qualms. Briefly, Mr. Wright.
Thank you, Mr. Monitor. I do want to keep this real brief. I am Kevin Wright, the executive director of the Chatham Historical Society. Since nineteen seventy-seven, one of the historical society's most valued, valued and popular gifts have been the Stall neck murals, which are exhibited in the mural barn at the Atwood Museum. Much attention has been made over the years of the artistic value of the murals, and they have enjoyed wide noriarity. Despite having been restored in the past fifty years, it is unsurprisingly that after a half a century, these unique paintings are again in need of cleaning, glazing, and restoration. The estimated cost for this is four hundred and sixteen thousand, one hundred eighty-eight, four hundred and eight thousand, of which has been recommended by the CPC to be funded through, through the CP grant. To honor the community of townspeople of our past, and to help preserve its memory for the community that we have become, we humbly ask you to vote yes, and for this request, and we thank you deeply.
Thank you. Further discussion under Article Thirty. Motion before you is that offered by Mr. Tennyson, the town appropriate from CP funds, Community Preservation Fund, the sum of four hundred and eight thousand dollars, for the purposes set forth in this article, will try a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
So voted by a very substantial majority. Article Thirty-One, to see if the town vote to appropriate or transfer Community Preservation Historic Reserves and Undesignated Fund Balance, certain funds for the continuation, the restoration, rehabilitation of the barn formerly located in North Chatham, and now with the head of Ryder's Cove. For a motion, Mr. Tennyson.
Thank you. Article Thirty-One is basically a continuation of previous CPA funding that supported the deconstruction, the meticulous deconstruction of this barn that was built in the seventeen hundreds. It is being moved to the Nickerson Association site on Orleans Road, and is going to be meticulously reconstructed, using the same tools and techniques that were employed in the seventeen hundreds. So I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from the Community Preservation Historic Reserves, the sum of one hundred and forty thousand dollars, and one hundred and thirty-five thousand from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund Balance, for a total of two hundred and seventy-five thousand, for the purpose of funding the rehabilitation and preservation of the Nickerson Historic Barn, including funding for its reconstruction, as well as necessary costs and expenses related thereto, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Tennyson. Finance Committee, recommendation, Mr. Young.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee voted unanimously to recommend approval of this article. We think it's a worthy project. We've been watching it going on for the last couple of years, and we're, we're going to be delighted to see it completed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young, for the discussion under Article Thirty-One.
Mr. Moderator.
So I'm quite in favor of his preserving history, so I'm not against the topic, but it seemed to me the people who govern the town and being stewards for the town, I'm wondering, are there any, does the town have any contractual right to use the facility? The warrant says it'll be used for meetings and gatherings and education. It doesn't say whose meeting, or what gathering, and what education. Is the town assured that it has right to use this, this restored barn and gain the benefits? It seems to me like if it's on private property and it's, there's no contractual rights, the, most of the benefit accrues to the family foundation, or whoever that is. So do we have any rights to get a return on our investment, other than just nice to know about restoration? And if we don't get any rights, why not?
Anyone care to respond to Mr. Glass's question? Mr. Tennyson.
Yes, as with all CPA-funded projects in the historic preservation category, there will be a deed restriction on this property, which will assure that it is maintained as an historic structure. In other words, it cannot be modified and used for commercial purposes, or something like that. In addition to that, the Nickerson Family Association, as you may know, already has at its site the Calab House, which is open to the public, which is used for a number of meetings and educational purposes. The barn will be at the same site and will operate. The barn will be at the same site and will operate under the same situation where it will be available to the public for basically understanding the carpentry that went into that type of an historic site, but also for other meetings and purposes as well.
Thank you, Mr. Tennyson. Further discussion. We'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. So voted by a very substantial majority. Article thirty-two, Community Preservation Funds for Union Cemetery Headstone Preservation. For a motion, Mr. Tennyson.
Yes, Article thirty-two is also a continuation of previous CPA funding, which restored the headstones at the Seaside Cemetery. And we were very pleased with the results of that project. If you've seen the stones at Seaside Cemetery, you know that they're now shining brightly white up on that hill as opposed to kind of yellow and deteriorated. So this will do basically the same work at Union Cemetery for a hundred-and-twenty-seven headstones that have been designated as historic. So I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer $40,335 for the Community Preservation-- from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund Balance, and $9,700 from the Historic Reserve for the purpose of funding rehabilitation and preservation of historic headstones at Union Cemetery, including necessary costs and expenses related thereto as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Tennyson. Mr. Finance Committee recommendation, Mr. Papalardo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee, with a vote of nine to zero, recommends the adoption of this article.
Thank you, Mr. Papalardo. Further discussion, pardon me, under thirty-two, Mr. Taylor.
Just a moment of inquiry, if I may. My name is Seth Taylor. Has anything been done to communicate with the families that are associated with these headstones to see whether or not they want their family's stones buffed up? I got family buried in every cemetery here. Nobody's talked to me.
Mr. Tennyson, care to respond to Mr. Taylor?
I have not talked to any of them. Is there anyone else from the Cemetery Commission or the Cemetery Department that would like to comment?
Mr. Whitcomb of our Cemetery Commission.
Good evening. David Whitcomb, chairman of your Cemetery Commission. To answer your question, no. If you can find anyone alive that's there to talk to from those people, we might do that.
Mr. Taylor, you have a future. Mr. Buckley?
We have one.
Yes, Steve Buckley. For many years, my father had a contract to take care of landscaping on Union Cemetery and Seaside, so I'm very familiar personally with many of the inhabitants there, including my grandparents, who bought the former Buckley property. And I noticed that recently Adeline Buckley's headstone, my grandmother had a big chunk taken out of it, which I had never seen done while we were taking care of the prop-- while the Buckleys were mowing the whole place. And I suspect it's because somebody was not being careful. And so anyway, I was, yes, curious about the hundred-and-twenty-seven, and who do I report it to, and does rehab include replacing chunks and not just cleaning?
They are rehabbed, so if there is a broken stone or a headstone that has fallen over, the professional who is doing this, and I might add that they do contract with a professional, they put the stone back together the best they can. If there's a piece missing and it's not around, that may turn out to be difficult, but they do the best job they can.
Okay. Well, now I'm on the record, and the Cemetery Commission can check out Adeline Buckley's headstone. Thank you.
Mr. Buckley's been here a long time, but he didn't disclose that his mother's family's from far off Orleans, so. Further discussion under Article thirty-two. If not, we'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. So voted almost unanimously. Article thirty-three, Community Preservation Open Space Funding for the Little Mill Pond Pier at the foot of Mill Pond Road. For a motion, Mr. Tennyson.
Thank you. Any of you who have been down to the Little Pond Pier know that it is really in need of reconstruction. So I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from the Community Preservation Open Space Reserve, the sum of $500,000, for the purpose of funding the Little Pond Pier reconstruction project, including necessary costs and expenses related thereto as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Tennyson. Finance Committee recommendation, Ms. Andres.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As a seaside community, maintaining our water access points and our water infrastructure is extremely crucial and valuable to our residents and visitors alike. The Finance Committee, with all nine members present, voted unanimously in support of this article.
Thank you, Ms. Andres. Further discussion under Article thirty-three. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Wiseman.
Yeah, I'm going to be a pain in the rear end today. So I actually use the Little Mill Pond dock, and it's really not in bad shape. It might not be perfect, but it's still in very good shape, I think. We've been using it for quite a few years, so I just think the price is a little too high, and I'm not sure why it's so high. Just something to consider. I'm going to vote no.
Thank you, Ms. Wiseman. Further discussion of the article. If there is nothing further, we'll put the matter to a vote, trying a voice vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article three is offered by Mr. Tennyson, say aye. Those opposed say no. So voted by a majority. Article thirty-four, to see if the town will vote to appropriate or transfer from Community Preservation Open Space Reserve, funding for field studies to preserve open space for salt marshes. For a motion, Mr. Tennyson.
Yes, Article thirty-four is also a continuation of previous CPA funding. That funding conducted these types of field studies on the impact of climate change and other factors on the salt marshes along the southern coast of Chadham. This article will allow similar studies to be done along the other nine salt marshes in Chadham. So I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from the Community Preservation Open Space Reserve, $140,000, for the purpose of funding field studies to preserve open space for salt marshes, including necessary costs and expenses related thereto as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Tennyson. Finance Committee recommendation, Ms. Shields.
Field studies will help us better focus our efforts on protecting the precious salt marshes we are so lucky to have. The Finance Committee voted unanimously to support the Community Preservation Act.
Thank you, Ms. Shields. Further discussion under Article thirty-four. We'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. So voted, I think unanimously, Article thirty-five and Article thirty-six were passed on the consent calendar. It was not unanimous, thank you. So noted. It was voted by a very substantial majority. Articles thirty-five and thirty-six were passed on the consent calendar, which leads us to Article thirty-seven, a revision of-- to see if the town will vote to amend its general bylaw in regard to stormwater management. For a motion, Mr. Schell.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town will vote to amend Chapter thirty-eight, two-thirty-eight, of the general bylaw as printed in the warrant under Article thirty-seven of the town meeting warrant, to meet the post-construction stormwater runoff obligations of the current MS four permit and align with town's stormwater management regulations.
Thank you, Mr. Schell, for Finance Committee recommendation, Ms. DeYoung.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Finance Committee recommends approval of this article by a vote of nine-zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Discussion under this article. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Nickerson.
Good afternoon. Jenny Nickerson, North Chadham. So on page sixty-two slash sixty-three, under pollutants, number E, pesticides, herbicides, and fertilizers. When I walk in North Chadham, there are many streets where the runoff water from landscape irrigation is pouring down the streets into the stormwater drains. Most all of these same homes use pesticides, as I see their little yellow warning signs on their lawns. I'm surprised that the same article on page sixty-six, under exemptions, number two, lists landscape irrigation. It is hard to believe that after applying pesticides, herbicides, and fertilizers to a lawn, that when the irrigation comes on, that none of the runoff does not carry any of these toxins into the stormwater drains. This does not make any sense to me to exempt landscape irrigation. I would recommend also, at some point, the town of Chadham would consider mandating that the irrigation heads to be no closer than three feet away from any road pavement, and to limit their use from mid-June to mid-September. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nickerson. Further discussion under this Article thirty-seven. If not, we'll put the matter to the vote. This is not a zoning bylaw. It's a general bylaw, so it only requires a majority vote. Those in favor of the motion that's made by Mr. Schell say aye. Those opposed say no. The ayes have it. Article thirty-seven is adopted. The general bylaw is voted to be amended as set forth therein. Article thirty-eight, I am going to ask Mr. Whitcomb to come up and serve as moderator under Article thirty-eight, because I may wish to speak. Yeah, Tracy. Tracy Shields.
Article thirty-eight, General Bylaw Amendment, to see if the town will vote to amend General Bylaw, Chapter ten, as printed in your warrant. For a motion, Mr. McCastro.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town will vote to amend Section ten-point-three-A of the general bylaw as outlined in Article thirty-eight, or take any other action in regard thereto. Mr. Moderator, I would like to add that the select board was split evenly on this particular item, so at the appropriate time, I'd like to have an opportunity to offer a comment. Thank you.
Okay. First, I'd like to go for the Finance Committee recommendation, Ms. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article thirty-eight is an amendment to an existing bylaw, which, for historical reasons, are no longer relevant, prohibits members of the Finance Committee from serving on ad hoc and advisory committees. Under the terms of the proposed article, members of the committee will still be prohibited from serving on regulatory boards, or standing committees, or serving as town employees. The Finance Committee enthusiastically and unanimously voted to support this article.
Thank you. Mr. McCastro?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm speaking now just for myself. I was in the affirmative on this particular item when it came before the select board. The current bylaw prohibits members of the Finance Committee from serving on other committees or town bodies. The purpose of this is to-- of this amendment would be to allow participation by members of the Finance Committee on non-standing committees and non-regulatory boards, but only on ad hoc or advisory committees. And the intention is to allow the town to have the advantage of a particular area of expertise that an individual member of the Finance Committee might have and could contribute to the work and purposes of a particular committee. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Metters.
Since it was a two-two vote, I feel kind of obligated to put the other side of the coin on. First and foremost, I have the utmost respect for our Finance Committee. If you look at the-- our town meeting system, what two committees are sitting up here? We have the Select Board on one side and the Finance Committee on the other. They put tremendous hours in, time, expertise. I voted against this simply because I believe they should keep their pure independence when we work with the town system. They have a certain expertise. They serve the community extremely well, but I think putting them into another board or committee, I think, could potentially jeopardize some of that and shade it in a way that would be inappropriate. I would like to keep their independence and let their expertise stand, and I support them one thousand percent, but I do not support this article.
Anyone else on the board, Select Board? No? Anyone on the Finance Committee who want to enter into this discussion? Anybody in the audience like to enter? Yes. Mr. Moderator?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Bill Litchfield. This is a simple and appropriate update of a bylaw which has been set, dates back to a previous form of government when the Finance Committee actually created the budget. It would still, as previous speaker noted, prevent Finance Committee members from serving on any regulatory or standing committees, but it would allow the Select Board, only if it saw fit, to appoint Finance Committee members either as representatives of the Finance Committee or on an ad hoc basis, to advisory or special committees. There should be no concern about the Finance Committee members losing their independence. Rather, it would simply allow the town to take advantage from time to time of that expertise, but only when the Select Board and moderator thought it appropriate. The change does not require the Select Board to appoint Finance Committee members to anything, but by way of example, a special committee relating to our fishing industry might benefit from the services of Mr. Papalardo. That devoted to environmental issues might benefit from the experience of Ms. Andres as a prime case. Mr. Whitley, who's not here today, but Mr. Whitley has three decades of experience in construction matters. He was asked to serve on the Montemoy Regional Building Committee for this school. He was only allowed to do it because town council sagely advised that the Montemoy Regional School District is a separate legislative entity, but if it were a town board, he could not serve on it. That, I think, would have otherwise, based on an inappropriate legal distinction, would otherwise have deprived us of his service. If the Select Board sees fit to utilize the skills and experience of the volunteers on your Finance Committee on special committees, and they are willing to serve, it should be allowed to do so. This is a reasonable and appropriate request, and I would urge, respectfully urge you to vote in favor of this bylaw. Thank you.
Mr. Taylor?
Mr. Moderator, Mr. Moderator. Seth Taylor, I think that Selecton Metters is absolutely accurate in that any opportunity for people to get the perception that there is a conflict, the Board of Selecton, or the Select Board as they're now known, they are the administrative component of our government. And the number of hours that are put in by the Finance Committee, they represent us, the voters. And that level of independence between what is brought to us in our town meetings to vote on and to consider, there needs to be a clear line separating those two functions. Anybody on the Finance Committee, and they work like dogs, that feels viscerally the need to serve some other function, has the ability to step down and serve that function. I don't think we should make it a practice to do anything that starts to break down the line between the people who are supposed to be advocating for us exclusively, have some connection to the Select Board, who although we elect, are looking at our interests from a very different point of view. And I would urge you to support Mr. Metter's point of view on this and vote against this article. Thank you.
Any further discussion under? There's a motion to move the question. Takes a two-thirds vote. Takes a two-thirds vote. If you're ready to vote, I guess we'd better use the clickers? Or no, let's try the voice vote. We're going to vote on the motion to terminate discussion. Yes. All right, we're going to vote to terminate the discussion on this article. Takes a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I've always wanted to say this, but I think by a substantial majority, that passes. Now we can vote on the main motion. And I think we'll try a voice vote again. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
And once again, I get to say, passes by a substantial majority. Excuse me?
The moderator now?
Just for that one article, sir.
He's back.
I love you.
He's back.
He's back.
I'd like to welcome the town moderator, Ms. Litchfield, back, please. Good job there.
Dave, he can't wait to get out of the car.
Thank you, Mr. Whitcomb. As is obvious, I had an interest in that article, and that's why I stepped down, but, Mr. Freidenheim, I'm back. We will now move forward to Article thirty-nine, a zoning bylaw change in regard to the West Chatham Neighborhood Center, for a motion, Mr. Spru of our Planning Board.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to amend its existing protective zoning bylaw, as printed in the warrant, under Article thirty-nine.
Thank you, Mrs. Spru. We'll get back to the Planning Board report, which the Chair, Mr. Spru, will offer, and he can then speak to the article, but we'll start with Finance Committee recommendation, Ms. Bragg.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee voted six-zero-zero on this article, because we think it is a step forward in establishing areas for the common good, for housing, for commercial development. And there was a precedent for this, years ago, by the federal government, in setting aside land for our veterans who came home from World War II, for veterans' housing. So the idea is for the common good, and we voted unanimously for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bragg. Mr. Spru, for a Planning Board report and any remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. For everyone who don't know me, my name is Art Spru. I'm Chair of the Planning Board, and I'm here to present the West Chatham Neighborhood Center District bylaw, on behalf of the Planning Board. Whoops. Good thing there's a back click. The Planning Board sees this zoning bylaw amendment as an opportunity to create strong connections and predictable development, to enhance the character of the Village Center, to promote pedestrian-friendly design, to encourage flexible parking requirements, to encourage a range of housing opportunities for the year-round residents. Planning Board held over twenty outreach meetings with the public for the last five years while developing the bylaw. What we heard from the community is, preserve the village character of the corridor, protect historic buildings, promote green spaces, provide a mix of residences and businesses. In addition, the Planning Board heard concerns about the runway protection zone, which will be discussed later in the presentation. Design criteria that is incorporated in the bylaw comes from working with the community input received during a 2020 survey that we began the process with. This led us to move in a direction of what is called a Form-Based Code, which uses pictures, diagrams, and simple language to describe the types of growth and development that are desirable to Chatham. Let me bring up a couple of key features associated with this, because it's different than just text on a paper. The key feature, some of the key features, is the architectural building form. We've defined primary facades not to exceed twenty feet, that's what's facing Route twenty-eight, and a total facade not to exceed seventy-five feet, and it's set back ten feet. The building features that we were looking at is a minimum of thirty-five percent windows on the front commercial ground level. Materials that we called for are traditional wood clapboard and shingles, or other alternative material. And on roof slopes, we defined a minimum pitch of six-on-twelve, and dormers set back a minimum of five feet, no flat roofs. Now, here's an example. We have a picture of the clothing bar, that's in the Village Center. Many of the criteria that we were listing here, this is an example of it. And those are the type of things that we're prescribing in this bylaw. Another key feature is streetscape amenities. The bylaw criteria locates buildings along Main Street to be set back a distance between ten and twenty feet from the road. The setback allows for amenities such as benches, walkways, dining areas, porches, and balconies. Now, the Form-Based Code allows us to deal with these exterior-type things in comparing, rather than just focusing on the interior uses. It's a balance between exterior and exterior. And again, here's another example. This happens to be in the Village Center. This is a streetscape space that's right adjacent to the Mayflower Shop. You can see the building is set back from the roadway. There's space there for benches. There's even balconies here. These are the type of things that we're prescribing in this bylaw. Landscaping is required in the front yard to maintain a pedestrian-friendly streetscape. Landscaping is also required in the parking areas, and a creation of a common open space in the residential areas. I'll move on to parking, and I'll go back to the image. Parking is set to the side and the rear of the sites. The criteria allows shared parking on the site of two or more uses, and encourage linked parking, which allows vehicles and pedestrians access from parcel to parcel. Now, here's an illustrative example of what the bylaw will allow us to produce and create. This is on the north side. This is an example on the north side. This is not something that's proposed of Route twenty-eight. Route twenty-eight's on the lower edge there. You see on the front, you see landscaping adjacent to the commercial building. You see landscaping that is in the parking areas. There is a common area, open space, by the residential units. This is all prescribed criteria that we have in the bylaw. Parking, we're showing here on the side and in the rear, no parking is allowed in the front. And a big thing that we're proposing here, because all the parcels here are private, is we're linking the parking. So, parking at this site would be linked to the parking on each side. And the whole idea is, there's no reason for a vehicle to exit this particular location, drive onto Route twenty-eight, back to the adjacent site. All this can be done off the main roadway.
Mr. Spru, I'm going to, well...
I have a concluding statement.
Thank you. We also need the Planning Board report, whether you or Ms. Halpern makes it, Planning Board, either one of you, the actual report. But we'll deal with that. You go ahead and finish up, if you want, Mr. Spru, and then Ms. Halpern.
All right. Well, the result of defining this criteria in a bylaw is to deliver predictable outcomes. This is just finishing my first part of this presentation. I'm asking on behalf of the Planning Board for your support on this long-term vision for the West Chatham Neighborhood Center.
Thank you. Now going to recognize the Vice Chair of the Planning Board, Catherine Halpern. I discussed with the Planning Board earlier that I wouldn't really exempt them from the five-minute rule, but I would allow them to split their time, or follow one on one to the other. Ms. Halpern?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I want to advance this slide. Yes. So we also just wanted to take a few minutes to comment, to address some concerns that came up during our public outreach. There were some questions about how we handled the runway protection zone that is associated with the airport in generating the new West Chatham Neighborhood Center zoning. I think, very simply, we handled it in the manner that is consistent with Massachusetts state law. Protected uses and square footage are protected, so those uses and square footage in existence are protected. That means that redevelopment can occur in the same use, and with the same square footage, but no expansion of development is allowed in the runway protection zone. Businesses that are there, the business uses that are there can remain and redevelop as they are, as a pre-existing use. Also, there is no new residential units allowed in the runway protection zone in West Chatham. So that is how that is handled. You can see in the visual that there is an overlay, that purple area, that's what's called the runway protection zone. That's defined by certain technical parameters, aeronautical parameters with relation to the airport. Whoop. Go back. There we go. Yes. So we also just wanted to discuss briefly density. The West Chatham Neighborhood Center, the proposed zoning allows for five units per acre. We're talking about residential units per acre are allowed by right, with up to ten residential units per acre allowed by special permit, that will be reviewed by the Planning Board. The purpose of allowing a somewhat greater density is to allow, encourage and allow the development of attainable and affordable year-round housing for Chatham residents. So we're looking at smaller units and a slightly greater density, but just a reminder that this area used to have a flexible overlay district on it that allowed for something like twelve units per acre, so it's really not that great of an increase in density. We do allow single-family dwellings, but only on single lots that are undersized, and would not be large enough for more than one dwelling. However, in the five units per acre by right, and the ten allowed by special permit, multiple single-dwelling units would be allowed on a single lot, that would be like detached townhouses, and similar to a cottage colony. So we just wanted to touch on a few points about the density. Also regarding the infrastructure capacity, the Board, the Planning Board did do research into whether our current infrastructure can accommodate the total redevelopment of the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. We will have to make some determinations according to capacity. There is some upgrading to our system that would need to be done to fully redevelop West Chatham Neighborhood Center, but we anticipate that the redevelopment will be slowly over time, and the Board will have an ability to regulate the projects as they come forward. So in closing, I just wanted to take a minute to look at this visual with you. This is a potential redesign, one possibility, of how a three-acre lot could be redesigned and redeveloped in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center, implementing the proposed West Chatham Neighborhood Center zoning. This lot is where the post office is, but with West Chatham Neighborhood Center, as Art explained, parking is not allowed in the front, and we do ask that buildings be built closer to the road, with some landscaping buffer. And you'll see that all the parking is in the back of the building, or on the sides. The building in the front is a mixed-use, commercial and residential building. The people who did this visual for us chose to use the maximum size, but we wouldn't need to. It could be smaller buildings in the front. Then behind that, you see additional mixed-use buildings, that would be commercial and residential, and behind that, you see residential units. So even though with landscaping around, which are specified by the bylaw, so what you see is a pedestrian-friendly, livable neighborhood center that can allow for some commercial uses, as well as residential, and a variety of options of residential, a variety of sizes, and what we anticipate is a variety of price points, so that it can give greater option, greater diversity to the housing options in West Chatham, as well as allowing the commercial uses to continue. And that that can be redeveloped in a way that is visually attractive, and using the Form-Based Code is completely in accord with the aesthetics and that we wish to maintain in Chatham.
So thank you, Ms. Halpern.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Spru's going to offer the Planning Board report, which is a fifteen-second read.
Yeah.
Maybe ten.
At a duly posted and noticed public hearing held by the Planning Board on March seventeenth, the Board voted six-zero-zero to accept and recommend the West Chatham Neighborhood Center bylaw to the annual town meeting warrant.
Thank you, Mrs. Spru. Mr. Fulton?
I don't think that's on yet. We'll try it again. Go ahead, try it. Should be.
Well, okay. Do I understand that a residence is not allowed to expand its footprint in the runway protection zone, but a business is allowed to expand its footprint in the runway protection zone?
Anyone care to respond? Mr. Spru?
In the runway protection zone, residents are not allowed to expand, and neither are the commercial developments. They can redevelop them, but they can't...
Within the existing footprint.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, everybody. My name is Judy Patterson, and I live in West Chatham, and I'm totally against this article. The Planning Board has inexplicably and intentionally excluded the former Buckley property, which is fifteen-thirty-three Main Street, the Affordable Housing Project from the Neighborhood Center, despite its location, ignoring the fact that the massive increase in density of this proposal in affordable housing will directly impact West Chatham. There's been virtually no coordination between the Planning Board and the Affordable Housing about their respective visions, or the collective impact on infrastructure services required, traffic increase, overall density, appearance, and quality of life for those who live and travel through West Chatham. The bylaw also erroneously states that it implements the goals of the Town of Chatham's comprehensive plan. The original intent of the two thousand and three plan was to limit density increase in neighborhood centers. The bylaw itself is eighteen pages, with so many rules, no developer would even be able to figure it out. It prohibits single-family residents, which should be encouraged to provide options for families and homeownerships in the neighborhood centers. Building setbacks state minimum road setback ten, maximum twenty feet from the road. It doesn't define if the road is the curb, the multipurpose path, or the right-of-way. It makes a difference as to how close these structures will be to the roadway. The setback further narrows the line of the site of the corridor, which is already narrow enough for the amount of traffic there. The bylaw also micromanages every facet of future development, including front yard Quote, "The Planning Board may approve planting in boxes or pots containing trees, shrubs, or flowers to comply with the intent of the regulations." This bylaw, as written, is worse than the condo association rules, and will discourage potential development. This bylaw is nowhere ready for primetime. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson. Dr. Thompson?
Mr. Moderator, Mike Thompson. I support the goals of this article, and the work of the Planning Board, but the location is seriously flawed. The airport is still planning to cut down all the trees around and behind Ocean State Job Lot. This will not only look incredibly ugly, but will show just how low planes might fly, and just how close the end of the runway is. and just how close the end of the runway is to this proposed West Chatham neighborhood. The so-called runway protection zone, which the FAA insists is unsafe and should remain empty of people and houses and businesses, also runs through this proposed West Chatham neighborhood. The proposal continues to ignore promises made to the FAA in grant assurances 21i that it would adopt zoning laws to restrict the use of land adjacent to or in the immediate vicinity of the airport, and, I would add, especially for high-density housing. Banning large jet planes, which we're talking about in Article 59, might at least partly mitigate the noise and safety threat. So the proposed residential West Chatham neighborhood is just not compatible with the airport and today's airport traffic, and this article must unfortunately be rejected.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Mr. Buckley.
I deferred. Mr. Levitt, I think had his hand up before I did, so-
Well, you were standing there, but you're very gracious. Mr. Levitt, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Rick Levitt. My wife, Ella, and I live in West Chatham Village Center. We're longtime advocates for revitalizing the center. We support this article. We supported earlier improvements that made West Chatham Center Main Street pedestrian-friendly, cyclist-friendly, and much, much safer for motorists today. We also encouraged implementing Chatham's comprehensive plan, a plan for a vibrant West Chatham Village Center of small-scale businesses with families and homes and apartments there. This is the development concept authors of the Chatham Comprehensive Plan had in mind for Chatham, a traditional village center concept that concentrates small businesses and homes in moderately dense, walkable village centers. The same development pattern you see when driving Route 6A, the old King's Highway. Route 6A didn't happen by accident. Back in the 1970s, the Cape was experiencing the same growth as today. The Old King's Highway Act was passed to manage that growth. Route 28-style suburban highway sprawl was outlawed on Route 6A. That's what you like about Route 6A. If you like Route 6A, please vote for this article. That will revitalize West Chatham Village Center and end the threat of suburban highway sprawl on Route 28 in Chatham. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Levitt. Mr. Buckley, then Mr. Wordshafter, then Ms. Wiseman, then the gentleman who's been standing by the mic. So, Mr. Buckley.
Yes, Steve Buckley, one of the few remaining. There might be a few other people here who were on the local comprehensive advisory committee that came up with the comprehensive plan in 2003, which is 22 years ago, and I'm glad to see that we're finally on, possibly on the verge of rezoning that was recommended in that plan. And I'm hoping that we won't have to go for another 22 years. So, but I would, and the other part, though, is I want to reiterate what just, the previous speaker just said was that, is that the idea in drafting that plan was to prevent sprawl. Nobody likes sprawl, but they also don't like, some people don't want any development. But the trade-off was that if we downzone between village centers, or neighborhood centers, as they're also known, then the trade-off will be, we'll have to put development in, redevelopment in the village centers. So that's the trade-off, and that was what, I believe, the local, the comprehensive plan, which was adopted unanimously in 2003, was, was meant to do, that there's a trade-off and that, and that we have to have local, affordable housing, multifamily housing, denser housing someplace. And so that's what this really is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buckley. Mr. Wordshafter, then Ms. Wiseman, and the gentleman. I would suspect that no one in this room would be deeply offended if anyone cut their remarks to three minutes or so. Sir?
So I, I am a member of the planning board. We've spent the last five years working on trying to figure out a way to bring some affordable and, and public, affordable and attainable housing into this town. And the choices are big apartment buildings or something that looks more like that drawing over there. And that's the choice you're making today in terms of, can we put together a bylaw that allows us to expand a little bit in turn to a village instead of the, you either are commercial or you are residential in this town right now? This is our attempt to develop thoughtful ways with thoughtful applications to make that work. That's the first thing I'm going to say. Second thing I have to say is it has nothing to do with the airport. Those of you that don't want the airport, please don't vote against this just because a very small portion of the, of the center falls within the airport zone. We have taken that portion out of this plan. It has its own way to work around it. It won't, it won't cut down trees. It won't do anything if you pass this law. So please, if you're against the airport, don't just vote no because you're against it.
Thank you. Ms. Wiseman.
Just one concern. I mean, I think this is a beautiful-
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I know who you are, but if you were to tell us-
Paula Wiseman, sorry. North Chatham. It's a beautiful idea, and I think it's great. My only concern is the, the infrastructure, the, you know, will we be able to pump water enough, the electricity, all those. I think we have to really address that. We're a little town, and I grew up in a town called Hull, Massachusetts. Some of you may know of it. And every summer, when the crowds came in, and I lived up on Alton Hill, so I was up on a hill, I couldn't, we couldn't take showers at the end of the day sometimes. The water would trickle out. And again, this was even well into when my husband and I lived there, probably 20 years ago now, but, and they put pumps in the water towers so that we could have, you know, extra thrust behind the water. So I think it's just something we have to seriously think about. I, I'm all for bringing in affordable housing. I think we really need it here, but we have to be able to handle it. We have a water problem here, and, and, you know, we have to be able to handle these buildings. So just, just a thought on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. Jason Paul, West Chatham. Another, my wife and two kids. I thought this was going to be a business center. Is that still correct, or is that not part of this?
Anyone care, Mr. Sprouse, care to respond to Mr. Paul's question?
It's, it's a mixed use. The, the buildings that are adjacent to Route 28 are commercial and could be a component of residential above, and then the rear could be commercial or a mix of residential.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, so my, my concern is really around the affordable part of it is that, you know, I'm all for affordable housing for teachers, firefighters, you know, police, as somebody mentioned earlier, but we can't discriminate, I don't think, if there are Chatham employees or Harvard employees. We can't discriminate and give them housing priority over anybody else in the state, correct? So with that being said, you know, I think there's another way, if we want to help the local employees, right, that, that have proven themselves, that want to live here and contribute to the, the town, I guess. I'm sure more people do that can't afford to live here yet, but, you know, previous bills there by Mr. Tennyson, they were about, I don't know, six or seven, that equal $2 million. So if we divvy up those funds, put a down payment on a house for an employee of the town, that's, that's 10 homes, right? $200,000 each, down payment, a million-dollar home. So I think there's other ways to accomplish affordable housing for employees of the town. Because you can open it up to, just drive down Route 28, you know, Yarmouth, you know, affordable housing down there, and I live around the corner, and safety of my kids, you know, and I just, I'm against this bill because of the affordable housing and density that it will bring into that area, and with my kids riding bikes down to an ice cream store that's owned, you know, locally. So that's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Ms. Greenholt.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Charlene Greenholt. I am on the planning board. I am the clerk of the planning board. I also have 33 years of municipal land use planning experience here on the Cape. I think this is a very well-written, well-thought-out bylaw. I do believe that there are some misconceptions that have been brought up here, and I'm certainly not going to try and delve into each and every one of them. At the public hearing, we had all of one person attend, which we found very unfortunate. I think some of the questions that have been asked previously were answered by the board through a variety of different mechanisms. I think it's also important to point out that it's not just affordable housing that's being created here, it's all kinds of housing. It's a mix of housing, a mix of commercial, between the landscaping and the parking. This will create a beautiful opportunity for developers, and I do think, even though this is a very lengthy bylaw, it gives a developer exactly what they are going to need to do to comply with the bylaw. As a, as a land use planner on the Cape in several towns, including my start here in Chatham, one of the things that I always got from developers is, well, what does a town want to see? This is the first bylaw in town that actually says, what does the town want to see? So I support this, and I hope you do, too.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Motion for the previous question, which is motion to cut off debate. It itself is not debatable. I know that there are at least two other, at least two people who've been waiting to speak, but the motion for the previous question is itself not debatable. If you desire to cut off debate, you'll vote yes. If you want to continue to discuss this article, you vote no. All those in favor of the motion, previous question, say aye. Those opposed, say no. Certainly more than the two-thirds vote. We will now vote on the main motion as offered by Mr. Sprouse. The town vote to amend its protective bylaw as set forth in this article in the warrant. We'll take an electronic vote. If you're in favor, please vote yes. If you're opposed, please vote no. This requires a two-thirds vote. Thank you. And Mr. Semple, in there?
One has voted.
Everyone has voted. We can now close the vote, display the tally. The vote is 253 in favor, 143 opposed. That is not a two-thirds vote, so Article 39 does not pass. Article 40 is, I assume, not going to have a motion because it was dependent on Article 39. So there will be no motion under Article 40. Article 41, a grant of utility easement for the former Eldridge Garage. For a motion, Ms. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to authorize the select board to grant the right and the easements for overhead lines for distribution of electricity and lines for control, relay, and communication purposes over, under, across, and upon a certain parcel of land. The premises, as more particularly described in the deed filed in the Barnsville Registry of Deeds in Book 30979, page 333, owned by the grantor, located at 365 Main Street, Chatham, Mass., which is approximately shown on a sketch labeled Exhibit A, and to authorize the select board to do all things necessary to carry out the provisions of this article.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Davis. Finance Committee recommendation, Mr. Dome.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article 41 grants an easement to Eversource for the installation of overhead power lines into the new Eldridge Garage parking lot project. The Finance Committee voted unanimously to support this article.
Thank you, Mr. Dome. Further discussion under Article 41. Yes, sir. Mr. Phillips.
Brian Phillips, 374 Orleans Road. My issue with this article is that merchants only have three months out of the year to make all their money. That's June, July, and August. We don't have enough parking downtown. I'm pretty sure everybody knows that here, especially in the summertime. Each spot generates between $100 and $300 conservatively. If you go out to lunch, buy a sundress, get some candy at the Candy Manor, it's about $300 bucks. If we give up control over eight spots, that's between, you know, $100 and $225,000 that we're taking out of the local economy. So I urge you guys to vote no, to keep at least $200,000 that the merchants generate over the, our busy season. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Further discussion under Article 41. Ms. Goldsmith.
Director of Community Development, Katie Donovan. She was the project lead for the Eldridge Garage renovation project.
Ms. Donovan, our Director of Department of Community Development.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good afternoon, town meeting. So in response to the previous speaker's concerns, during the summer months, the parking lot is actually operated by an attendant, and the attendant will have the opportunity to move vehicles around when the EV charging spaces, spaces are not being utilized. And so therefore, they will not be, those spaces will be available when not in use for EV chargers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Donovan. Further discussion. Now, we'll put the matter to a vote, because this is an easement, thereby requires a two-thirds vote. We will try it on a voice vote. For all those in favor of the motion as offered by Ms. Davis, say aye. Those opposed, say no. Certainly voted by more than the requisite two-thirds majority. Article 42 was carried under the consent calendar, as was Article 43, which leads us to Article 44, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to petition the state legislature for special legislation in regard to prevailing wage law for a motion. Mr. Schell.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to authorize the select board to petition the general court for special legislation, seeking the town's exemption from complying with Sections 26 through 27, 27G of Chapter 149 of the general laws for protection, for projects estimated to cost $50,000 or less, as printed in Article 44 of the town meeting warrant.
Thank you, Mr. Schell. Finance Committee recommendation, Mr. Papalardo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. By a vote of eight to zero, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of this article.
Thank you, Mr. Papalardo. Further discussion under Article 44. Now, we'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. So voted by a very substantial majority. Article 45, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to petition the great general court for special legislation in regard to a housing trust. For a motion, Mr. Nacastro.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to reaffirm support for the special legislation, seeking the creation of the Chatham Housing Trust for both affordable, up to 100% average median income, and attainable housing, up to 200% average median income, as described in Article 45 of the town meeting warrant.
Thank you, Mr. Nacastro. Finance Committee recommendation, Ms. Madison.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This bill would allow us to include a category for affordable housing candidate families earning up to 200% air- housing candidate families earning up to 200% area median income, and, you may remember, has twice before been approved by Town Meeting. The committee unanimously supported refiling this petition with the state for its blessing.
Thank you, Ms. Madison. Further discussion under Article 45. If there is none, we'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. So voted by a virtually unanimous majority. Article 46 was passed on the consent calendar, which leads us to Article 47, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to petition the state legislature for a real estate property transfer fee yet again. For a motion, Mr. Dykens.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to reaffirm support for the special legislation to impose a fee equal to one-half of one, one-half a percent of the purchase price paid upon the transfer of any interest in real property situated in the Town of Chatham for consideration of $2 million or more, as printed in the warrant under Article 47.
Thank you. Mr. Dykens. Finance Committee recommendation, Ms. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It was recommended by our state representative that we should reaffirm this petition so that the vote is valid during the next state legislative session. This petition demonstrates our community's desire to support not only the more restrictive capital A affordable housing, but the creation of attainable lowercase a housing, so needed by many people that are critical to the function and character of our town. The half a percent transfer fee on high-value properties reflects the value we place on maintaining a year-round community. The Finance Committee voted seven to one in favor of reapproving the petition.
Thank you, Ms. Shields. Further discussion under Article 47. Here, Mr. Glass.
Bill Glass, North Chatham. Lots of benefits of democracy, but democracy has a downside. It allows the majority to designate a suitably small minority that they can always outvote and impose an unequal penalty on that population. That is clearly what's happening here. I disagree with the characterization by the Finance Committee member of what this demonstrates. What it demonstrates is the ability of the majority in this town to spend other people's money. If there was such a consensus in town for the affordable housing program, which you've already heard me express my objections and why so, we could have demonstrated that by having the transfer tax, maybe not half percent, but graduated to raise the same estimated amount of revenue and impose it on all property transfers in town. But that didn't happen. So, in my opinion, what is demonstrated by this is the willingness to penalize a minority. And the additional negative of that is, since most people will have no skin in the game on how this money is spent, you can guarantee that it will be spent less wisely than if it was funded by the general population. Owners of these properties already contribute disproportionately to the town's revenue through their higher property taxes. But we have seen fit not to recognize that. Since we can outvote them, we're going to stick it to them again. This is bad politics, and it doesn't reflect well on our values as a town.
Thank you, Mr. Glass. Further discussion under Article 47. Mr. Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Paul, yes. Thanks, Mr. Glass, for your courage. So, question, I guess, for a real example here. So hypothetically, this is a pretty long, lot to read there. Sorry for my inability to figure it out. But so hypothetically, you know, million-dollar home, I transfer to my kids in 10 years. What's, what do they have to pay? If I transfer to them, and I do it under a dollar, right, from a transfer of trust, so what's the, what do they owe? What really happens here?
Not my field to answer, but I will anyway. If it's a, a legitimate conveyance for nominal consideration, there is no deed excise tax of any time, any kind, let alone the additional. Am I incorrect?
Correct.
That is correct.
So they owe nothing, and they wouldn't have to pay anything.
Well, they owe you a great deal for the house morally, but that's a separate issue.
I'll get them for that later. Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Huther.
John Huther, Chatham. Mr. Glass, thank you. I couldn't have said it better. I could never have said it better, but thank you for your opinion, and I have wholeheartedly agree with him.
Thank you, Mr. Huther. Further discussion. Ms. Bergstrom.
They once asked a famous bank robber, Willie Sutton, why he robbed banks. And of course, his answer was, because that's where the money is. And the reason that we, I, the reason, one of the reasons I support this is that you call it a penalty, but the people who were willing to buy a $2 million house five years ago are now willing to buy a $4 million house now, and will probably be willing to buy a $6 million house 10 years from now. That's how the property values have gone up. The one and a half, the percentage that this tax on them is not going to make a difference. I guarantee it. And it certainly does add to our ability to add affordable housing because, and in speaking to this and to further articles, you know, we want this to be a real town. We don't want it to go the way other towns are where, and I mentioned one of our towns far to our north, where they have very few families. Everybody is just a part-time resident. Everybody is just there in the summer, and there's very little room for real people. The schools lose population. So the purpose of this affordable housing is not just to help the people who need it. It's about the character of our community. And I think that anything we can do to preserve that is worthwhile. And, you know, at the end of the day, if somebody buys a $2 million house and they have to pay a little extra, well, that's the price they pay for living in this community, where we have real, real people living real lives, and we have a diverse population. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bergstrom. I get a sense you may be ready to vote on this article. So we will now put the matter to a vote on... Somebody's saying something.
I, Mr. Moderator.
Oh, Ms. Bragg.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Thank you. I have a question for the Finance Director. Would she please tell us what other two, a transfer taxes are, already appear on any property that is sold in Chatham? We are already taxed by Barnstable County and by Massachusetts government with two transfer taxes. And beyond, well, I'll wait until the Finance Director responds.
I can say for some steps, $6.48 per $1,000 of conveyance listed in the deed. So .0648.
For Barnstable?
No, total between the Commonwealth and the county.
For the total. And that would amount to how much on the $2 million home?
The current tax, about $13,000 in round numbers?
About. Yes. And that's one of the reasons I voted against this article. And the second reason was brought up by the previous speaker. Taxes, to be fair, should be universal. If it's something we believe in, we should all have a stake in supporting it. It shouldn't rely on someone who's held home, because even though we say the seller's, the buyer's going to pay this tax, there'll be a negotiation for that amount of money. So the seller will not get the same amount he or she would without this. So I just think it is not a fair tax because we all aren't involved in it. We're expecting just the people who sell their homes to pay for something for us, and I don't think that's democratic or right.
Thank you, Ms. Bragg. Further discussion under Article 47. If there is none, we'll put the matter to a vote. We will try a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
In my opinion, the ayes have it. If there is a request for a, there are seven. All right, we'll do a vote, please. Please display Article 47. We will now open the vote. If you are in favor, vote yes. If you are opposed, vote no. Anyone here in the gym who has not yet voted? Thank you. And Mr. Semple?
We have one, one person we're waiting for here.
All right. Would you please let me know when that happens?
She has voted. We're all set.
She has voted. All right. We will now close the vote. The vote is 212 in favor, 175 opposed. Article 47 is passed. Article 48, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to petition the great general court to authorize associate members of the Conservation Commission, allowing them to act at meetings. For a motion, Mr. Metters.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to authorize and direct the select board to petition the general court for special legislation as follows. Notwithstanding Section 8C of Chapter 40 of the General Laws, the select board of the Town of Chatham may appoint three associate members to the Conservation Commission of the town for terms not to exceed one year. The chairman of the commission may designate an associate member to sit on the commission in the case of absence, inability to act, or conflict of interest on the part of a member of the commission, or in the event of a vacancy on the commission until the vacancy is filled in accordance with the Section 8C of said Chapter 40.
Thank you, Mr. Metters. Finance Committee recommendation, Ms. Madison.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Frankly, some of us, or perhaps I should admit that at least one of us was surprised that special legislation was required for approval of something that seemed like common sense, recommended for approval nine to zip.
Thank you, Ms. Madison. You recognize that we live in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you. Further discussion under Article 48. If not, we'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. So voted by, with not more than scattered nays. Article 49, to see if the town vote to accept, and we have the Town of Chatham, the seasonal community designation is recently enacted by the state legislature. For a motion, Ms. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to accept the seasonal community designation as provided for in the General Laws, Chapter 23B, Section 32B.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Finance Committee recommendation, Mr. Young.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee voted five in favor, one opposed, and none abstaining.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Ms. McCollum of the Community Housing Partnership.
Hello. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yes, so the seasonal communities designation is part of the State Affordable Homes Act of 2024. The state has finally recognized that particular housing challenges facing communities in both Barnstable and Berkshire counties because of the extreme impact that tourism has on the sustainability of year-round communities. Chatham automatically qualifies for this designation because more than 35% of its homes are seasonal, but the designation has to be officially accepted by a majority vote of Town Meeting. This legislation came about because Cape towns, including Chatham, through their home rule petitions and other feedback to the legislature, kept asking for tools to create more year-round housing that was not tied to affordability. We also wanted to be able to create housing that would be able to be targeted to year-round workforce, including teachers, firefighters, and others who earn too much to qualify for affordable housing. Adopting this legislation would allow the town to establish a year-round housing trust and allow us to purchase year-round deed restrictions to create permanent year-round housing that wouldn't be tied to affordability. This opportunity in particular allows for the most cost-effective way for the town to acquire placeholders for future generations of locals. The town could also develop housing with a preference for year-round public employees, those essential to maintaining our year-round community with teachers, first responders, and public works, employees specifically mentioned in the legislature. Again, this would not be affordable housing. It wouldn't have all the restrictions that affordable housing is subjected to. This would be the much-needed year-round housing that we've all been asking for. This designation also allows the town to give preference to housing, artists, writers, and other creatives that are important to the cultural heritage of the Cape, if they choose. Now, Chatham has proposed to take this one step further with a home rule petition, which is warrant Article 50, that would extend this preference to the commercial fishing community, which is just as important to our economy as well as our cultural heritage. There are three requirements to becoming a seasonal community. The first is acceptance of the designation by the Town Meeting vote. The second is to adopt a zoning bylaw that allows for some development of year-round restricted tiny homes, which are defined as 400 square feet or less. And third, to adopt a zoning bylaw that allows for some development of year-round attainable homes on undersized lots. We have been assured by the Executive Office of Housing and a Livable Communities, Secretary Ed Augustus, that these new zoning bylaws will be up to the towns. This legislation specifies that development on undersized lots would be subject to local regulations, including sewer and septic regulations. And towns would be able to craft its own bylaw and could include other local requirements in ways that make sense for Chatham. And of course, any zoning amendments would follow a process of public hearings with our planning board, and most importantly, would require that two-thirds approval at Town Meeting. There are advantages to being an early adopter of this designation. Towns that do so will have the priority, will have priority in all of the state's one-stop grant programs. In all my years of being a housing advocate, I have heard many suggestions on how we might develop housing, and there are reasons we don't do the most obvious things. Our hands are always tied by rules and regulations. The reality is, without the seasonal community designation, there is no mechanism in state law that would allow us to create year-round housing that is not tied to income restrictions and to give preference for that housing to be for our year-round workforce. If you support this article, we'll finally have the tools we need to move forward and develop a type of housing that is vital for the sustainability of our year-round community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCollum. Further discussion.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Andres.
I'd like to speak on my, as a voter, not as a member of the Finance Committee. Some of you may or may not remember a letter to the editor that my colleague Barbara Madison and I penned. I'm going to read that today. At first glance, this appears that adopting the seasonal community designation would be a wonderful idea, all the things that were pointed out, all the tools that this gives us. But before we leap, we wonder if we shouldn't be more circumspect in our examination on what this really means for the Town of Chatham. The state law we're being asked to adopt will allow us to create year-round attainable and affordable housing. These new houses would be deed restricted to year-round occupancy and, as well as these tiny houses that were mentioned. So far, it sounds pretty good, but we are concerned that it does require us to change our zoning and residential areas and allow for the development of undersized lots. How many undersized lots do we have? If you live in an R40, how many 39,000 square foot lots are there? If you live in an R20, how many 19,000 square foot lots, or 19, or anything just below that? So, and how many can we, can be created? Can you create undersized lots? Can the town limit the number of properties or keep areas in town to this zoning where it makes most sense? What we were told, what I had read was that it required that the town simply do zoning in all residential districts that allowed for development of undersized lots. Should we be concerned about the drain on our already-challenged water supply? Do we have the resources for this unknown amount of development? And if at some point, should we deem that we are built out per our own town's definition of build out, can we opt out of this designation? The law seems to be silent on that. So answers to these questions and additional concerns have been described as unclear. What was just referenced by the previous speaker, I don't know if there's something in writing that actually says we can say that we only want undeveloped, undersized lots in certain areas of town. I would like to know that, and I'd like to know that we could perhaps determine where that is within the community, and that it's not just blanket across the whole town. Considering that we have four housing projects currently underway, doesn't it make sense to see how well the town adapts to another 200-plus residences before rushing headlong into adopting this law with so many unknowns? We don't lobby against the adoption of this designation. We simply ask that we wait for the state to develop more guidance that's in writing, and for the town to conduct a build-out analysis so that tax-paying voters can make an informed decision. Proponents will tell you that these early, that these early adopter towns stand a chance, a better chance of getting grant money, but we think that that chance doesn't outweigh the necessity for careful consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Andres. Ms. Davis. Thank you, Ms. Andres. Ms. Davis?
Shereen Davis. By accepting the seasonal communities designation, it will reflect the unique challenges towns like us face with larger seasonal populations. The status unlocks critical eligibility for straight, state grants, planning support, and policy considerations tailored to communities whose infrastructure and services are heavily impacted by summer influxes. Chatham will be better positioned to advocate for fair allocation of state resources, especially, but not limited to housing, public safety, transportation, and wastewater management, areas strained by seasonal surge. It also strengthens the town's case when applying for state funding to address workforce housing and the year-round residents who bear the cost of services used disproportionately by season visitors. In short, this designation empowers Chatham to be able to plan more effectively, access targeted support, and protect its character while addressing its unique demands of being a premier seasonal designation. This is the tools in the toolbox that we have, we need to be, to keep our character as a small town. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Davis. Further discussion. Ms. Nickerson?
Jenny Nickerson, North Chatham. I just have a couple of questions. Is the, if this is approved, then will the town of Chatham be giving up any of our voting rights? Will we have to abide by what the state is telling us to do? And, let's see, and will the state then continue to oversee and overrule everything about our seasonal community housing units once they are established?
Anyone care to respond to Ms. Nickerson's question? Ms. McCollum?
Yes, we've been assured by the state that the town of Chatham will be allowed to do their own zoning laws. If we aren't compliant, if we can't come to a solution where we could do some tiny houses, it's not everywhere, and small lot houses, we would lose our designation. The state can't come in and dictate what we do. They're giving us the opportunity to have this, to do year-round deed restrictions. They're not going to control the year-round deed restrictions after we get them. That will be something the town will do. And then, all we could do is lose the designation if we don't comply with making some modifications in our zoning laws to allow some small houses and some undersized slot development.
Thank you, Ms. McCollum. For Mr. Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It's my understanding, and I hope I can be corrected if I'm wrong, but this would create the opportunity for people that already own their home to sell their home to this trust, and that it would be a difference, the purchase price would be a difference between fair market value and what is considered to be the reduction in value of the property based on a twenty percent figure, because somehow there's been some marketing analysis done that says, if I come to buy a house and I, I can only use that for year-round residents, that I'm going to pay less for it, and that's reasonable to me. But think about it. How, how does that become affordable for the town? And I'm not sure. I mean, I like the idea, but if you buy a home right now, or buy a property, that's a million-dollar property because somebody's on it and they're cash-strapped, and they get a two-hundred-thousand-dollar kicker, they say, sure, I'll do that. They get to continue to live on their property because all he did is sell the deed restriction. We have to wait for them to die or sell the property, and then, all we're assured of is that, in fact, that property now will be a year-round residence, and it's going to be sold for eight-hundred-thousand dollars instead of a value of a million dollars. And that may help us get teachers, firefighters, and stuff like that, but as one of the previous speakers said, I'm not convinced that that is yet the case, and, and I think we need to be a little more cautious about evaluating this for the upside. I do see some potential for big upside, but I also have some serious concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Yes, ma'am.
Catherine Scherer, Jeanette Drive. There's no reason not to accept this designation. As Shereen said, this gives us tools that we don't have today to help create attainable housing for the people who live and work in this community. The previous speaker talked about one of the mechanisms that we would be allowed to use. Whether we would use that one, how we would do it, we haven't worked out those specifics. But if we don't accept the seasonal community designation, we can't do it. We just can't. Now, somebody expressed concerns about, you know, what changes we might have to make to our zoning. Well, we already, we do not have a minimum house size in Chatham. You can already build a four-hundred-square-foot house in Chatham. So, we probably don't need to change our zoning regulations because of that one. And we allow construction on undersized houses today. We require, it has to be a buildable lot. That's likely still to be a requirement, right? It has to be able to accommodate septic if you can't connect to the sewer. That's still going to be a requirement because the state law says, we're not going to be forced to let people build on lots where you can't have appropriate sanitary. So, I frankly do not understand the concerns unless you just don't want affordable or attainable homes in Chatham. Please vote for the seasonal community designation.
Thank you very much. Ms. Wiseman, then I think you're probably ready to vote. Ms. Wiseman?
I'll be real quick. Paula Wiseman, North Chatham. So, my concerns here is, you know, it, it's not specific enough. You know, it's allowing rezoning with no thresholds and no committee approvals, and this could essentially completely rezone the entire town. I think we have, I think it's not going to hurt us to pause and really think this through, and I don't believe that if we don't take it now, we can't get it later. It depends on who the governor is, okay? So, there's always room to change our minds later. So, I just think, we're taking on a lot of new housing, as it is with the things that have already passed. It's not going to hurt us to pause and say no on this one. We always have opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wiseman. Mr. Paul, and then we'll vote. Mr. Paul?
Hi, I'm Jason Paul, West Chatham. So, I guess the concern is, I mean, if there's any new house being built or a plan being put forth, the building committee, right, building committee in town has to approve it, correct? Anything, whether it's a tiny home or anything, addition, right, new home?
There are two, two issues. One is the building code, which is enforced by the building department, that's state law basically, and then we have a zoning bylaw, so things are reviewed by the Department of Community Development, but not everything is, not everything requires approval. Does that respond to the question?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah. So, if this is passed, any new home that has to be built using this act, it'll have to go before the building committee, essentially. It has to be approved, whether it's electrical, plumbing, you know, sewer, septic, everything.
A further answer for me could give an impression one way or the other, which is not my job to do. Anyone care to respond to Mr. Paul's question further?
Well, no, I don't want to respond. I, I, I think it wouldn't be, it would be useful if town council could kind of give us an overview of the implications of, and, and the restrictions that we're adopting if we happen to pass this, and the risks if, of, of doing that.
Mr. Tullman?
Jay Tullman, Town Council. Any structure, any house, any residence has to get approval by the building commissioner. Will still require, regardless of approval under a bylaw adopted under the seasonal community designation or otherwise, will still have to go through the regular building permit process and whatever other process is required depending upon the location of the property. In terms of the restrictions and everything else, just to answer Chairman Shell's question, this is all discretionary. Nothing is being adopted. No one can pass a bylaw without coming back to this body. No one can just impose restrictions on property unless we develop a scheme for that. There is still a lot of unknowns about how the, what the state will add as further guidance. Their existing guidance right now is not some kind of takeover of year-round or seasonal development. They're giving room for towns to develop their own scheme, which would likely mean that folks would have to come back here for bylaws and other requirements. I hope that helps.
Thank you, Mr. Tullman. We will now proceed to vote on article forty-nine. Ms. Davis moved the town vote to accept the seasonal community designation for which provision is made in state law. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
My opinion, the ayes have it. I'll certainly take account if anyone, or seven people request it. Raise your hand if you'd like to count. There are more than seven. We will now vote electronically on article forty-nine. If you're in favor, vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no. Anyone here in the gym who has not yet voted? One. Let us know, please, when you're ready. And, thank you. And, Mr. Semple, are we in there?
We have one more that needs to go.
One more to go.
Okay, we are voted.
Thank you. We'll close the vote. Please display the totals. Two hundred and sixteen in favor, one hundred sixty-three opposed. Article forty-nine is adopted. Article fifty, very briefly. A gentleman, a couple of days ago, asked me if it was possible to amend the five-minute rule, make it a lesser sum, lesser amount, and I told him no, but I did say that late in the course of the meeting, the meeting could vote to amend its rules, or by unanimous consent, we could agree to reduce the speaking time to three minutes. And I think there is unanimous consent here. You're a very cooperative town meeting. Let's be honest, we have eight articles to go. You don't want to come back tomorrow. So, we will continue on. Article fifty, home rule petition to add commercial fishermen as a designated vocation for affordable and attainable housing. For a motion, Ms. Davis? We on? Ms. Davis moves that the town vote to authorize the select board to petition the general court for special legislation in substantially the following form, to authorize commercial fishermen to be included as a designated vocation for affordable and attainable housing preference within the town of Chatham, as presented in article fifty of the town meeting warrant, and authorize the town to agree to in substantial changes as may be required by the state legislature. Thank you, Ms. Davis. Finance Committee recommendation, Ms. Sprague?
Mr. Moderator, the fishermen are the backbone of our community here, and they deserve whatever encouragement we can give them for their success in their profession and with their families. We voted five in favor, two against, and one abstention on this article.
Thank you, Ms. Sprague. Further discussion under article fifty. Ms. McCollum, briefly, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So, as we mentioned before, the Seasonal Communities Act allows for specific designations for certain industries, and we certainly feel as though the members of our commercial fishing industry should be included in that preference for housing. It's hard to pick and choose who gets a preference or not, but the intent of this act is to allow towns to sustain vital industries to, to ensure that the town can function, and commercial fishing in Chatham should be included as one of those vital industries, and we should do all we can to support all that they do for our community because it is a, it's the foundation of Chatham life. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCollum. Further discussion under article fifty. Yes, sir?
Hi, yes. My name is Jerry Gordon, South Chatham. My question is, who decides who a commercial fisherman is? Is it the guy that bangs nails all year and then has a commercial striper license for a month? Does the person who has a commercial clamming license, is he a commercial fisherman? What about the people that support the commercial fishermen? The, the people that paint the boats, cover the boats, the people that work at the, at the yards? Certainly, they're important as well.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Anyone care to respond to Mr. Gordon's question? Well, if, if, if there's no response to Mr. Gordon's question, and there is not, apparently, so I'll recognize Mr. Berwickstrom, who's moved the previous question. Mr. Berwickstrom's motion is to cut off debate. All in favor of cutting off debate say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. So voted by more than the requisite two-thirds majority. We will now vote on the motion as offered by Ms. Davis. Town authorized the select board to petition the great general court for designation of commercial fishermen as a designated vocation for affordable and attainable housing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. So voted by a very substantial majority. Article fifty-one is a zoning bylaw amendment having to do with conservancy district setbacks. For a motion, Mr. Eldridge?
Good afternoon. I move that the town make the following zoning changes to the zoning bylaw as outlined in article fifty-one.
Thank you, Mr. Eldridge. Finance Committee recommendation, Mr. Dome?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article fifty-one is a citizen petition article. The article seeks to review a recent interpretation of zoning law with respect to the required setbacks relating to the placement of accessory structures on properties with fresh or saltwater frontage. The committee voted unanimously to support article fifty-one.
Thank you, Mr. Dome. We'll have a planning board report, and then Mr. Eldridge, planning board report, because this is a zoning bylaw amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. At a duly posted and noticed public hearing held by the Chatham Planning Board on August twenty-six, two thousand twenty-four, and continued to January thirteen, two thousand twenty-five, the board voted six in favor, zero, zero, to accept and recommend the Conservancy District Setback Changes within the protective zoning bylaw per the citizens' petition zoning bylaw amendment as it appears in the annual town meeting warrant.
Thank you, Mr. Spru. Mr. Eldridge?
Good afternoon. I'm Thad Eldridge. I'm from West Chatham. I'm a local land surveyor, and I've gone to many of the boards. I have some experience there. I was given the opportunity and the encouragement to help start a nonprofit named Impact Chatham with the goal of bettering our town. Through Impact Chatham, we have three zoning bylaws before you this evening. Zoning is tricky. Subtle word choices and various interpretations can lead to unintended consequences, and this bylaw is a review and direct response to what we believe is an unintended consequence. In nineteen sixty-six, seventy-nine, and eighty-five, our town meeting adopted zoning bylaws to protect the ponds, wetlands, and floodplains, in that order. These are known as the conservancy districts. There are use limitations within those conservancy districts, and there are zoning setbacks from them. In two thousand twelve, our town meeting adopted zoning bylaws to better define and regulate accessory structures. These include sheds, mechanical sheds, detached garages, bunkhouses, guesthouses, poolhouses, and pools. The two thousand twelve language did not include the requisite setback to the conservancy district. The design professional community as a whole did not really realize this for twelve years till a bright attorney reviewed it with the commissioner, the building commissioner, in two thousand twenty-four. The interpretation of the setback requirement changed, and we were briefly allowed to put accessory structures in the setbacks to conservancy districts. When I became aware of this interpretation change, I did not feel right about taking advantage of what I believed to be an unintended consequence. I brought this to Impact Chatham Board. We drafted a citizens' petition article relatively quickly. Once the planning board held an open public hearing, the ability to permit an accessory structure within the setback was put on hold. It has been brought up that the Conservation Commission has jurisdiction over much of this area as well. The Conservation Commission regulations differ from zoning bylaw, and the setbacks under the zoning is beneficial to the commission in applying their standards. under the zoning is beneficial to the commission in applying their standards. I bring this to town meeting as a question. Do we collectively want more development closer to the sensitive areas in our community, or do we want to uphold the requirements to push development back as we approved in sixty-six, seventy-nine, and eighty-five? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eldridge. Further discussion under Article fifty-one. If there is none, we will put the matter to a vote. This is a zoning bylaw, requires a two-thirds vote. We'll see, we do want a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. So voted unanimously. That is a tribute to the fact that, for the first time in about three hundred years, we have an Eldridge in a suit, so. Mr. Eldridge, thank you. Article fifty-two, a citizen's petition in regard to permitted uses within the conservancy district, for a motion. Mr. Eldridge.
I move that the town vote a revision of the Protective Zoning Bylaw by inserting a new paragraph M into section four A two, permitted uses within the conservancy districts as outlined in Article fifty-two.
Thank you, Mr. Eldridge. Finance Committee Recommendation, Mr. Papalardo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee declines to recommend this article as written on a vote of one to six. One in favor, six against.
Thank you, Mr. Papalardo. Planning Board Report, Mr. Spru.
At a duly posted and noticed public hearing held by the Planning Board on March twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five, continued to April fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five, and continued to April twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five, the board voted zero in favor, four against, and zero abstaining, to send a positive recommendation to the select board on the addition of paragraph M to section four A two of the Protective Zoning Bylaw per the citizen's petition zoning bylaw amendment as it appears in the annual town meeting warrant. Therefore, the planning board does not recommend this article to town meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Spru. Mr. Eldridge, and then I'll recognize Mr. Shell. Mr. Eldridge.
Good afternoon. I am Thad Eldridge of Impact Chatham. We're again talking about the conservancy district, and this time within the conservancy district. There are strict limitations on activities, and rightfully so, these are sensitive areas. We are not allowed to build new structures, new homes. We are limited in the coverage that's allowed. Proposed activities require review and permitting by the Conservation Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals. In many cases, Planning Board and Board of Health review proposals as well. There is existing development within the conservancy district. Little Beach, Eastwood Point, and the end of Ridgevale Road are heavily developed areas that are almost entirely located within the conservancy district. These are certainly not the only properties, but those are some of the larger areas. There has been a substantial amount of redevelopment within the conservancy district, especially in recent years. It's the rebuilding of homes, elevating homes, relocating driveways, upgrading septic systems, and upgrading utilities. Our current zoning bylaw allows for most utilities by right. Electric, water, gas, sewer, and septic systems are allowed with a review and approval by the Conservation Commission and the Septic Systems Board of Health. The zoning bylaw does not allow for the collection, treatment, and disposal of stormwater sewer, stormwater runoff in methods appropriate for these malign areas. The planners of the past did not consider stormwater runoff to be overly detrimental to the environment. That's why we have so many direct discharges going into wetlands and waterways. More recently, we have found that stormwater runoff does contain pollutants, and it should be treated appropriately. In two thousand and eight, the Department of Environmental Protection implemented the stormwater regulations and the Stormwater Handbook, along with a framework to file applicable regulations for review and approval with a local conservation commission. As these can get rather technical, it is important to note the Conservation Commission does have the ability to engage a third-party consultant at the applicant's expense for the review of technical documents. We also have town staff with experience and knowledge in these areas.
Thank you, Mr. Eldridge. Mr. Shell, I believe you wanted to speak on this matter.
Yes, thank you. The, the select board originally recommended this proposed bylaw by a five-zero vote, I think that was, well, several weeks ago, subject to receipt of the recommendation of the planning board. We recalendered the issue after receiving notice of the planning board's decision with respect to declining to recommend it, as you just heard Mr. Spru describe. We, we discussed it on, on Tuesday. I think the, the select board is strongly in favor of the intent and the purpose. We appreciate this, we appreciate the work, but after listening to a detailed discussion of the matter between Mr. Spru, Mr. Eldridge, we decided to rescind our recommendation by a zero-five vote, but I do want to emphasize that we're in favor in principle of the intent and effort that's being advanced here.
Thank you, Mr. Shell. Further discussion under Article fifty-two.
Forgive me, I, I want to correct myself. It was a four-to-one vote, one-to-four vote on the reconsideration. I'm sorry.
Thank you. If there is nothing further, we'll put the matter to a vote. We are now voting on the motion as offered by Mr. Eldridge. If you're in favor, say aye, and if you're opposed, say no. We'll try a voice vote. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say no. In my opinion, that is not a two-thirds vote in favor, and unless there is a request for a count. There is. Please display Article fifty-two. It requires a two-third, requires a two-thirds vote to pass. If you're in favor of Article fifty-two as offered by Mr. Eldridge, vote yes, and if you are not, vote no. Anyone here in the gym who's not yet voted? Thank you. And in the auditorium, Mr. Semple?
Everyone has voted.
Everyone has voted. Close the vote. Display the count, please. The vote does not pass. One hundred and sixty-one in favor, one hundred and eighty-eight opposed. Article fifty-three, to see if the town vote to amend its protective bylaw zoning in regard to exterior mechanical appliance systems, also known as generators and condensers, for a motion. Mr. Eldridge.
I move that the town vote a revision of the Protective Bylaw zoning by modifying section three D, three G, exterior mechanical system appliances as outlined in Article fifty-three.
Thank you, Mr. Eldridge. Finance Committee Recommendation, Ms. Andres.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. With eight of nine members present at the Finance Committee, the vote was eight, I'm sorry, the eight, the vote was eight-zero in favor of this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Andres. Planning Board Report, Mr. Spru.
At a duly posted and noticed public hearing held by the Chatham Planning Board on March twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five, and continued to April fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five, the board voted seven in favor, zero against, and zero abstaining, to accept and recommend the modified section three D, three G, exterior mechanical system appliances within the Protective Zoning Bylaw per the citizen's petition zoning bylaw amendment as it appears in the annual town meeting warrant.
Thank you, Mr. Spru. Further discussion under Article fifty-three.
Good afternoon. I am Thad Eldridge of Impact Chatham. This third, I, I regret that I did not change the name. Exterior mechanical system appliances or mechanical units is a mouthful. These are HVAC units, heat pumps, air conditioners, generators, and pool equipment. We're looking for three refinements of the bylaw. The first is the setback. Currently, you only need to meet the side yard setback from the street, which encourages placing these in the front yard. We don't feel that that is appropriate. The bylaw specifies that at-ground units are, need to meet the setbacks, so elevated units do not. If we're trying to stop noise from transmitting, we want to put those lower, and we want to keep them away from other properties. While these proposals make the things a bit stricter, we are also proposing the balancing of the bylaw by, instead of a zoning variance, allowing a special permit under section nine of, of chapter forty A. This would allow an applicant to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals in order to request a location that does not conform with the setbacks. As with all zoning applications, the neighbors would be notified, they would have the opportunity to review and comment. In many cases, there are better locations than meeting the setback. We are finding that with some of the unique properties that we have, and variances are extremely difficult, if not impossible. Fortunately, we do have a criteria for special permits, and that would be noise and litter. It's seldom used with, with decisions, and it would bolster the use of that. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Eldridge. Further discussion. Sorry, thank you, Mr. Eldridge. Further discussion under Article fifty-three. If not, we'll put the matter to a vote. We'll try a voice vote. This requires a two-thirds vote. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say no. So voted unanimously. Mr. Eldridge, I want to take a moment of sort of personal privilege and commend you for your efforts. We thank you.
I appreciate it, and currently, the suit works two out of three times.
If it were, if it were in baseball, you'd be at the top. Article fifty-four, to see if the town will pay an outstanding tax lien in regard to property on Cedar Street, for a motion. Mr. Taylor.
Mr. Moderator, voters, I move Article fifty-four as it's printed in the warrant.
Mr. Taylor has moved Article fifty-four as printed in the warrant. Finance Committee Recommendation, Ms. Madison.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The committee fully appreciated the intent of the petitioner and the substance of this proposal. We also thought his pivot to a new general bylaw was appropriate. However, in view of the facts that this payment would unfairly benefit only one of fifteen owners with tax title liens, and the town council found the proposal contrary to state law, the committee voted unanimously against its proposal.
Thank you, Ms. Madison. Mr. Taylor.
Mr. Moderator, I have two points of order and a point of information, if I may.
Certainly.
It's important that voters understand clearly that town council works for the select board as a legal advisor. Council has no authority to decide matters of town policy or to provide undue influence on matters occurring before the town. Advice from town council is a matter of opinion, and it is no way binding on the board or the town. Council is not an advisor to town meeting, and any suggestion that town council's opinion is binding upon voters at town meeting is an error. Second, town meeting is our legislative body, as the moderator frequently reminds us. Voters have absolute and unencumbered authority over the town's purse. Voters get to decide where the money is spent. Point of information is perhaps quite poignant. In January twenty-third, twenty-seventeen, Chatham had a special town meeting, and on the warrant at Article seven, we asked, or I should say, the Board of Selectmen, and I wasn't on the board at the time, asked voters to approve sufficient funds to pay an outstanding demand of property taxes that were due and payable to the town on a, or by a resident taxpayer. It was town council's opinion, the town council at the time was Mr. Costello, that it was a legal thing to do. By FOIA, I have received some information that I think is really critical in this regard. This is an email, and it is directed to the town manager from Pat Costello, town council, and I will quote, I'm not going to do the whole thing, because I've got limited time. These articles, this is from town council. It says, Jill, these articles are usually pretty straightforward, source of appropriation, amount, and purpose. The explanation will provide more detail. I propose the following language. This is town council. Article blank, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from funds available for appropriately, for appropriation or overlay or surplus, the sum of blank, for the purpose of satisfying the outstanding taxes, interest, and charges accrued for fiscal years two thousand and seven through two thousand and eleven, to the real estate tax account for the property located at Three Beach Prom Road, assesses parcel four D dash five dash A one. Two different town councils, one that told the Board of Selectmen that this was acceptable and permissible, and in fact, wrote the article that then became Article seven, and town meeting voted to approve the payment of these taxes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Taylor.
That's, now I will move on to the body of my.
Well, you, you raised a couple of ostensible points of order, and I thought you'd like me to respond to them.
Okay.
And a point of information, as to the point of order as to town council's responsibility, town council is indeed appointed by the select board. He is their attorney. He and his predecessors have always been viewed, notwithstanding that, as the town's attorney generally. Any attorney's advice is a recommendation and advisory. Those of us who occasionally are active in that field are not unaccustomed to advice being ignored. Having said that, advice is to be taken or not, but it's my understanding, or at least my recollection, that the select board at least can choose not to take the advice of town council, but that's the only advice they can take. In other words, they can't go attorney shopping. As to your second, so, to the degree that it was a point of order, I understand what you're saying, but I don't think that any attorney's recommendations or opinions are anything more than that. Secondly, as to town meeting's absolute authority, I feel strongly in agree, I am strongly in agreement with what you say. Town meeting, in my opinion, is supreme. You can do whatever you want. Having said that, it may not be legal either, it may not be strictly within the confines of applicable law, or it may be found by a court or an attorney general, the attorney general, not to be appropriate. A number of years ago, I was asked a similar question as whether the town could do X, Y, or Z, and I said, yes, it can do whatever it wants. Town meeting can do whatever it wants. The specific example I gave is I said, town meeting, if it desires, can declare war on Idaho, but if I lived in Boise, I wouldn't be overly concerned. And that applies here, too. As to the point of information as to what happened in two thousand and seventeen, I, I think you made the point, but I'm not sure there's any further response to that. Is that satisfactory in response to you, sir?
It is, in fact, that.
Thank you.
Two separate attorneys produce two separate opinions, one in favor of paying taxes, one opposed to it.
Frequently, with two attorneys in the room, you can get three opinions.
You can put one attorney, you can, you can put one attorney in a room, and he'll spend his life arguing with himself.
Thank you.
At any rate, moving on to the article. I've been given three minutes now. It seems to happen to me every time I put a petition forward, because I'm at the end. I'm going to try to speed memory you guys on what this is. Tax title is a lien put by the town on you, your property, if you don't pay your taxes, and a balance accrues. Prior to last November, the interest rate on that was sixteen percent. What happens when you try to pay that off, which this taxpayer tried to do, extremely low income, trying to pay that off, where does that money that's paying it off monthly go? It goes against interest first, right? Interest accrues daily. You pay monthly, you got thirty days of accrued interest, you drop a sum, what's happening? Today, as we sit here, this taxpayer is overpaying her annual taxes by approximately twenty-two-hundred dollars, while paying forty percent of her gross income. Only social security. Under the belief that she was doing her best to pay off her taxes. Meanwhile, we have, for years, had two opportunities that no one in town ever took advantage of to see that this sort of thing didn't happen to our most vulnerable taxpayers. Low-income elderly and disabled people. One of them, I'm going to address in Article fifty-five. I'm a citizen. I'm not a member of the board. I'm not a town manager, but I'm finding this stuff out and bringing it to you. I ask you to think about that. Article fifty-five will speak for itself, but it takes a long time to paw through all of these laws, and to, something had to come before you, I had to. I had to submit it prior to March. I've learned a lot more since, but I couldn't get it to you. There is another opportunity for this body. They'll have to take another town meeting. In title fifty-nine, there's an opportunity for people to have their taxes deferred rather than have their tax balance build up to the point of tax title being taken. If you're in a deferral program, there are a lot of different rules that benefit the low-income elderly taxpayer, but they were not properly provided in a timely manner to this taxpayer or to at least one other taxpayer, who I didn't find out about until it was too late for me to do anything about. I'm not cherry-picking taxpayers. I want to fix this for everybody. Article fifty-five will start that. An article I'll bring next year goes into chapter fifty-nine because it creates an opportunity for us to approve a reduction in the interest on tax-deferred accounts from the eight percent mandatory there to zero if we want to. And that'll help fix this problem where our elderly and our disabled, low-income taxpayers are being driven from their homes. We're doing everything we can to...
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Three minutes.
You've had four. You have somebody timing you, I believe, right in the front row.
Your kindness, sir, is overwhelming.
Point of information, Mr. Moderator?
Ms. Goldsmith and Mr. Wilber.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The town council opinion that we had from the previous town council related to an article that came before town meeting regarding a moral obligation. And the moral obligation was that when the town moved to a new financial software, at that time, it incorrectly erased the interest charges that were, that were paid by the person, the homeowner. And through many years, it just perpetuated through the tax bills as amounts due. So as an item that town council felt that was due to the fact of the town making the mistake per se, that was why he had crafted the article as it was. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goldsmith. Mr. Wilber.
David Wilber, Stage Island Road. My point of information is, should we pass this bylaw? Does that obligate the town to pay the tax liens for the other fourteen residents that are currently in arrears?
I'll give you a sort of a common sense answer, and the answer is no, it does not, because this specific, if you pass it, it specifies the property at three thirty Cedar Street. If anyone disagrees with me, yeah, I think they do not. Thank you. Mr. Taylor.
Beth Taylor, Chatham. A couple of things. My husband gets bogged down sometimes in a lot of details. I want to kind of give a broader brush to this. This resident did not come to us asking us to do this. We found out about it through word of mouth and went to her and discovered how incredibly large her, her bill is over $60,000 at last indication. She made the mistake of not paying, if you want to call it a mistake, of not paying for one year. And that was when her property taxes were below $2,000. They're close to $5,000. And that is one of the things that we, as we praise our administrators and everybody else in this town for our triple bond rating, we don't recognize what it does to the low-income families that would love to stay here, but over the years simply can't. She is part of our living history, and she has not approved this, and she does not promote this in any way, but her grandparents came here from Martha's Vineyard as a Wampanoag family with the Coast Guard. She is our living history here in Chatham. The last of it. We just approved money for a Nickerson barn, for flashing road signs. We pay over $30,000 per pupil every year. What we are asking you to approve... Minutes is up? We're not asking a whole lot of money, especially when we have eleven million in free cash for things that we approved and haven't been spent. I ask you this time to fix this, and going forward, we will make it so other residents are not in this situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
Good afternoon. My name is Bill Beistrom. I saw a sign on Orleans Road the other day that said, restore kindness. Well, you know, Chatham, I've always thought, has been a kind community. It's been a welcoming community. We've tried to do our best to help the people around town when they need it. This woman grew up in Chatham. She has been making payments out of her social security every year, and she keeps getting further and further behind, even though she makes, I'm going to say, approximately forty percent of her monthly social security, social security amount, which is a very small amount. She still is trying to pay her bill. She's trying to do the right thing. I'd like to see town meeting step up, in this case, help her. Help her do what we really should do for each other. We say we're here to help each other. Let's help her. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beistrom. Further discussion under article fifty-four. Yes, ma'am.
Zig from Chathamport. And it all sounds wonderful to want to help our residents, but I don't think it's fair when we've got fourteen other households that are also having this problem to have one singled out and be told, yes, we're going to be able to cover you through town meeting for us to cover your tax lien, okay? There are other options available. Why weren't they explored, such as a GoFundMe account, where people can offer to help to cover, people do that all the time? Why was it brought here instead of going through some of these other avenues that actually are available to all the citizens here who don't have to bring it to us to say, we resolve it for you here at town meeting? I just don't think it's fair.
Thank you. Further discussion under article fifty-four. Now, put the matter to a vote. We will start with a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
There's going to be a request for account, whatever I say. So we will now vote by electronic device. If you're in favor of the motion as offered by Mr. Taylor, you will vote yes. Anyone here in the gym who has not yet voted? Thank you. And Mr. Semple, the status in the auditorium?
Everyone has voted.
Everyone has voted. Please close the vote. Display the total. The vote is one hundred fifty-five in favor, two hundred sixty-six opposed. Article fifty-four does not prevail. Article fifty-five, to see if the town will vote to accept provisions of Massachusetts General Law, chapter sixty, section three D, is set forth in this article in the warrant for motion. Mr. Taylor.
Mr. Moderator, I move to see if the town will accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, chapter sixty, section three D in its entirety, the substance of which is available in your warrant for review. What this does is it starts to create an opportunity for us to help defray the tax burden on the low-income elderly and the low-income disabled by creating a fund that is overseen by a committee, including the town treasurer, the chairman of the Board of Assessors, and three citizens. A account would be established that is an interest-bearing account into which every taxpayer could contribute voluntarily, whatever amount of money they would like to. They would get a notice either with or as part of their semi-annual tax bill with a little box to check off saying, I would like to contribute X amount of money to this fund, and increase their check accordingly. The money then would go into the interest-bearing account, and the committee would establish a set of rules and procedures for how to properly evaluate the needs of, again, exclusively low-income elderly and disabled elderly people that are of defined low income. That's the substance of this. I ask for you to approve it. It starts on the path to prevent what has happened to Jill James Loewick and the other people. For your own information, at least one of the people that's in the tax title account is a, has a second home upon which they do not pay, or that they are in a tax title as a result of, and is certainly not somebody I'd be advocating for saying it would be fair to pay their taxes. I know, and I know more than anybody else here because I've looked at it, there is one other woman that is in Jill James Loewick's situation, and had I known it, I would have included her here. I can't fix it till next year. I will. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Finance Committee recommendation, Ms. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee is sympathetic to the plight of community members struggling to meet their tax liabilities and voted unanimously to support this petition. The creation of a mechanism by which those in a position and with a desire to do so may discreetly participate in the aid of such qualifying residents is a thoughtful addition to Chatham's efforts to protect and sustain an inclusive year-round population.
Thank you, Ms. Shields. Further discussion under article fifty-five. Point of information, Mr. Glass, you're going to have to take the microphone.
So I'm just unclear, Bill Glass, North Chatham. If you checked the box, then your payment would be whatever your tax liability is plus that one dollar, or is a dollar of your tax payment diverted to the fund?
Anyone care to respond to Mr. Glass and Mr. Taylor?
Your tax liability is your tax liability that's stated on your tax form. Any voluntary amount that you choose to add, it's supposed to be, as I read the law, in a, in dollar increments so that somebody doesn't decide that they're going to contribute thirty-five cents. But you can contribute whatever you want to. If you have the means to throw $10,000 extra on your tax bill to go in to help these people, you're welcome to do anything or do nothing at all, purely voluntary.
It is not a designation. It's an additional payment. Number of, another, kind of wealthy has had this for years, other towns do as well. Further discussion under article fifty-four. If not, put the matter to a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. So voted by a nearly unanimous vote, very substantial majority. Article fifty-five, to see if the town will vote to adopt Massachusetts General Law, chapter sixty D, sec, oh, I'm sorry, wrong one, article fifty-six, an article to, in regard to a tax title accounts and free cash report, a proposed bylaw for a motion.
I apologize. I'm not going to move this article while I was trying to get things in under the wire for certification for the warrant. This seemed to me to be an opportunity to front-load the account that you folks just approved, but in retrospect, I realize there are other mechanisms that are more appropriate to cover this, and although this is well-intended and the best thing I could come up with on short notice, there are better ways to bring this to everyone's attention and to work to see that we can do a better job of helping to defray the tax burdens on our low-income elderly and disabled folks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Article fifty-seven will similarly have no motion, so we have only two articles left. Article fifty-eight, to see if the town votes to adopt a general bylaw in regard to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Carol Gordon from South Chatham. I move that the town vote in favor of article fifty-eight as printed in the warrant. The bylaw requires that select board, that the select board designate two of its members to serve on the Board of Affordable Housing Trust. This change would reduce that requirement to one member of the select board and allow for the appointment of an additional citizen to serve on the trust. Thank you for remaining to vote on these, on this article. I urge you to vote yes, which will provide citizens a greater voice in choices and decisions about affordable housing in Chatham. This article is in compliance with Mass. General Law. Currently, the two select board members appointed to the trust vote as members on the trust and members of the select board. Two select board members equals four votes on the same issue, which appears to sum as double-dipping. What has prompted us to bring this article is that citizens' concerns are being ignored. There have been surveys and forms where townspeople have expressed their concerns. Perhaps a community member at large will view the issues we feel are being ignored through a more moderate lens: density, green space, traffic, and most importantly, sufficient pure, clean drinking water. As you know, we are now under water restrictions, and it's only mid-May, not July. Having a community member at large appointed to the trust will not only help affordable housing progress more quickly, but will certainly help us conserve the special character of Chatham and provide safe, quality, affordable, year-round housing units, housing units that fit into existing neighborhoods. Please vote yes. It's only common sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gordon. Finance Committee recommendation, Mr. Papalada.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. On a, two-thirds of the Finance Committee present for the vote, four supported it, two present voted against the citizen's petition.
Thank you, Mr. Papalada. Further discussion under article fifty-eight. Yes, ma'am.
Gloria Hicks, South Chatham.
Thank you, Ms. Hicks.
This article is about restoring good government with a member of the community that possesses expertise and experience in addressing housing needs and solutions in our town. It's about democracy and representation. When the Massachusetts Municipal Association was asked about the double voting on the same initiative by select board members and their trust positions, their response was, it's not necessarily a conflict of interest, it's just bad government. The State Ethics Commission was also asked about this, and they said it very well could be a conflict of interest, and people are free to make an inquiry. Please vote yes on this article to good government again and better representation of our town in a more inclusive way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Further discussion under article fifty-eight. Ms. Timpson.
Ann Timpson, I urge you to vote in favor of this article, fifty-eight. To prevent too much voting power in too few hands, we need more public input in the Affordable Housing Trust. To garner votes for the Affordable Housing Trust and the ensuing promotion of the development of Main Street and Meeting House Road affordable complexes, we were promised by some members of the select board that housing would be made available to, and I quote, "police, fire, and teachers." But when it came to select board and Affordable Housing Trust votes and hiring Penrose, the select board promise and our opinions were disregarded. Most of our local employees were left out of the lottery. Their salaries were above the state mandated ceiling. We also asked for ownership as well as rentals. The select board ignored, the trust and the select board ignored this request. You constantly stated at select board meetings that you wanted to support and welcome young families to Chatham, but you choose to allow approximately ninety percent one-bedroom units with one parking space. In no way does that accommodate a family environment. Why would a family of four choose to squeeze into a one-bedroom unit? A family would rather invest in a mortgage than lose... A family would rather invest in a mortgage than lose equity with a monthly rent. It is becoming clear that this master plan for Chatham is going to eliminate our middle-income working population and our seniors' unfixed incomes. Instead, we will have transient non-residents with no local history and no commitment to our community to serve a very small but economically comfortable year-round and seasonal residency. This is not what we voted for when we approved affordable housing. Please vote for 58. Thank you. Please vote yes.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Since you may be ready to vote on Article 58, the motion for you is as offered by Ms. Gordon. We will try a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
My opinion, the ayes have it, is a request for a count. If I see some hands, so I can count one, two, more than seven. We will now vote electronically under the motion offered by Ms. Gordon on Article 58. If you're in favor, vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no. Anyone here in the gym who has not yet voted?
Everyone has voted.
Everyone has voted. Please close the vote and display it. The vote is 280 in favor, 63 opposed. Article 58 is passed by that vote. Article 59, to see if the town votes to adopt a general bylaw in regard to the Chatham Municipal Airport for a motion. Mr. Stahl.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to amend its bylaws as set forth in this Article 59.
Thank you, Mr. Stahl. Finance Committee recommendation, Mr. Papalardo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It is the understanding of the Finance Committee that both Town Council and Council for the Airport Commission have opined that the bylaw proposed under Article 59 is preempted by state and federal law and would likely be rejected by the Attorney General if passed by town meeting. Further, some members of the committee remember the days when DC-3s with their 95-foot wingspans, dwarfing the 53-foot wingspan of the Pilatus PC-12, and without incident routinely flew into and out of Chatham Airport. By a vote of zero in favor and six against, the Finance Committee does not recommend the order.
Thank you, Mr. Papalardo. Mr. Stahl, would you like to speak to the article in not more than three minutes?
Yes, I would.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jerry Stahl of West Chatham. Neighbors, thank you for staying to vote for this article, which can make a big difference in preserving the quality of our community. I hope you will vote yes for it. The purpose of this bylaw is to prohibit the landing of turboprop and jet aircraft like the Pilatus charter planes at our town-owned airport. The Chatham Airport is only designed for the traditional, smaller propeller planes. The physical infrastructure of our airport does not meet the safety standards for the larger planes, which the FAA calls Airplane Design Group II. Due to the airport's location surrounded by wetlands and residents, it is not possible to upgrade its infrastructure to meet the FAA safety requirements for these larger planes. Yet, the number of flight operations of these planes continues to increase. It has exceeded the FAA limit of 500 operations for each of the past four years. These charter planes should be using nearby Hyannis Airport, which is designed for them, with longer runways, appropriate infrastructure, and a control tower. We all go to Hyannis when we need a big-box store or a large medical center. Why can't the big charter planes go there for their big airport? Big stores do not belong in Chatham, and neither does a regional charter hub. Who is watching out for the quality of life in Chatham? For these past four years, the FAA, the airport manager, the Airport Commission, the Select Board, and the town staff have taken no effective steps to address or even acknowledge the danger to the neighborhoods of West Chatham, South Chatham, and Great Hill. It is therefore now necessary for Chatham residents themselves to protect their community and adopt this citizens' petition. It is not our job as citizens to decide on subtle legality issues related to the bylaw, but to express our opinion on the kind of community we want. Lawyers for different parties may disagree on the bylaw's legality, but we are not voting on the law. We are voting on a growing problem in our community. There is no intention on our part to engage in expensive legal disputes. The legality of this bylaw, like all new bylaws, will be determined by the Massachusetts Attorney General, as we just heard. Claims that passing this bylaw will cause enormous legal expenses for the town, or ban emergency services, or require repaying FAA grants are false scare tactics. All language requiring the town to take legal action has been removed from the bylaw. In fact, however, banning charter flights will avoid the town and residents paying huge future increases in expenses. The Airport Commission plans already include many expensive services, facilities, infrastructure, flight approaches, and tree clearing for the benefit of charter companies. This bylaw is a compromise solution to the long-ignored conflict between airport development and neighborhood development. It retains all the traditional uses of the airport and just bans the most disturbing large planes, which are not appropriate to the design of Chatham's airport.
Thank you, Mr. Stahl.
Please vote yes in favor of this bylaw. Thank you.
Thank you. There are—there are eight people there, nine, 10, and some Select Board members. Mr. Uxtons, Mr. Wilber, then the Select Board.
Am I in the—
Unless there was a point of—bear with me.
Before you close debate, could we hear from Town Council on the matter?
Oh, I don't think I'm going to be able to close debate anytime soon.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying—I'm not saying when, just before. Thank you.
Sure. Mr. Uxtons, would you allow Mr. Tullman to speak? After you, all right? Very gracious. You're not in charge, but we'll do it that way anyway.
That's up to you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I would like to bring some facts that you may not be aware of. The airport does not belong to the Airport Commission, but it—but it—but it belongs to the town and to the taxpayers of the town. As the moderator said, what you say for the town goes. How you want to spend the money, this is what you can spend the money. So you own the airport. In opposition to Article—and I'm in favor of Article 59. In opposition to the Article 59, the chairman of the Airport Commission, in a recent Chronicle article, wrote—and these are important facts. This is what he wrote. "It is important to understand that this bylaw, Article 59, is unlawful. It would violate FAA regulation. It is preempted by federal law"—I didn't know that. "And it would not be approved by Mastot. And it would put the town in violation of the contractual grant assurances." Boy, that would scare any taxpayer. And in—and another Airport Commission member even wrote, "If Article 59 is approved, town will be required to defend the bylaw through a lengthy and expensive legal ballot." Battle, yeah. And town could be required to repay $7 million in grant money and lose all future funding from FAA. Boy, the sky's going to fall down on us. Funny thing is, the chairman of the Airport Commission used these same threats last year when the Airport Commission—when they had an article called 40, which proposed increasing the width of the approaching air surface corridor. This was the Airport Commission's article, and they used the same threats then to say if the—if the taxpayers did not vote for 40. Okay? They used the same threats then on Article 40. And indeed, the taxpayers did not support Article 40. It voted down the Airport Commission's Article 40, and the Board of Selectmen were shocked, and the Finance Commission was shocked because they voted for it. Nothing happened. FAA said nothing. Mastot said nothing. No grant money had to be repaid. Isn't that interesting? All these threats of grant money being repaid? No. Why? Because the state and the federal governments know that the airport belongs to the town.
Please begin to wrap up your remarks.
The taxpayers—I'm wrapping up. And the taxpayers have the right to manage the usage of their airport as they wish.
Thank you, Mr. Uxtons.
Thank you, and I've—and I ask you to vote yes for Article 59.
Mr. Tullman. Select Board has requested that Mr. Tullman speak to us.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Select Board. This is obviously a charged issue. I'm going to keep it to the very dry elements of Massachusetts law. Massachusetts is a home-rule state, which means each town gets to develop their own bylaws and regulations. There are limits to that, however, and the limits essentially are when a bylaw starts to infringe upon the exclusive province of state law, then that bylaw will be deemed preempted and rejected by the Attorney General. It's not always clear on its face when that occurs, but if there is an intention by the legislature—this is the standard—when there is an intention by the legislature to essentially cover the field of all regulations, they will not allow a local community to create bylaws that regulate it in a way that is inconsistent with the state's jurisdiction. Airport operations are no stranger to local regulation and issues regarding preemption. The Attorney General has had opportunity—and the courts have had opportunity—to review both on numerous occasions. I have been involved in some of those over the years with respect to the towns I represent. A city or town can, with impunity, say where you are going to locate aeronautical operations, whether that's helipads or an airport. You can do that. You can prohibit in the entirety where an airport can go or regulate that. Once an airport is established, however—as is the case here—the Attorney General has almost universally found that you can't regulate the operations of that airport, airport operations, including the activities and the choices of how specific airplanes or helicopters operate at that. What will happen—so, in my opinion, based upon my discussions with the Attorney General, based upon other instances where this has arisen in the past, this bylaw will likely be rejected by the municipal law unit of the Attorney General. If this town passes it—as it has the right to do here—it will get sent, as a matter of law, to the Attorney General's office. They will then send it directly to the Department of Transportation, and they will review it with their staff and give a recommendation back to the Attorney General. It's my opinion, based upon past experiences, that that will likely result in a striking of the bylaw in its entirety. I have—I am not offering an opinion on the—I am not offering an opinion on the federal preemption issues or preemption raised by the grants. That the Airport Commission's attorney has issued an opinion on that matter, and I think it—it speaks for itself. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Tullman. If it is a point of order, please state it. Into the microphone.
I—I was here first, and I have a point of order.
The gentleman's saying a point of order, and we'll see if it is a point of order. Into the microphone.
Why didn't FAA—
That's not a point of order. That's a question. You've spoken.
Question.
No, sir. Mr. Wilber.
Dave Wilber, Stage Island Road. My point of information is—excuse me. My point of information is, if this law passes, will the town be obligated to spend tax dollars with our Town Council in communicating with the FAA with the Attorney General? How much is it going to cost us?
Maybe two questions. Anyone care to respond to Mr. Wilber? Perhaps not. Dr. Thompson, then this gentleman. Dr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Michael Thompson. Last year, 320 large, low-flying jet and turboplanes—turboprop planes roared into and out of West Chatham. Flying friendly is just talk. Chatham Airport is constrained with an inadequate runway and a hill on the flight path, so the noise cannot be reduced on either landing or taking off. Methinks the Airport Commission doth protest exceedingly over legal costs. These are imagined. If this article passes, it will be reviewed by the state Attorney Generals, we just heard, at no cost to the town. There are indeed legal arguments that would allow the Attorney General to approve the bylaw. The FAA definitely has control of the airspace, but legal precedent gives the owner of the airport, namely the town, control of the ground. In addition, FAA Grant Assurance 22I states that we, the town, may prohibit or limit any given class of aeronautical use of the airport if such action is necessary for the safe operation of the airport as we define it, know about it, the FAA rules. Safe operation requires meeting FAA safety specifications. However, the airport cannot provide the mandatory runway safety areas for the large jet planes. Also, the clearance of the approach surface on Great Hill is only a few feet above the 12 houses under the flight path. This incredibly is 70 feet lower than was disclosed to the airport by the Airport Commission in documents submitted. Therefore, it would be very difficult for the FAA to argue against such a ban, especially as a ban would not affect traditional operations at the airport. So it is up to us to make large jet planes use the much safer Hyannis Airport. So ignore the legal naysayers and vote your disapproval of these large jet and turboprop planes, and support this article with a yes vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. I did not acknowledge that Mr. Tullman was willing to give a brief response to Mr. Wilber's question, so I'll recognize him for that purpose, and then this gentleman.
In fact, if the Attorney General approves the bylaw and it is challenged and it becomes a bylaw—
question, so I'll recognize him for that purpose, and then this gentleman.
In fact, if the Attorney General approves the bylaw and it is challenged and it becomes a bylaw of the town, it is possible that the town would incur legal expenses there. If the Attorney General doesn't approve the bylaw and that decision is challenged, then it is possible that, incidentally, the town will incur legal expenses there. The airport, the town has incurred a fair bit of legal expenses in and around challenges regarding the airport operations over the years.
Thank you, Mr. Tullman. Yes, sir.
Yes. Thank you. It's Mike Cortezie. I feel if we pass this today, it will put the town in a very bad position to spend almost a bottomless pit of money to defend the indefensible. In my opinion, if we pass this, the airport will, if we pass number fifty-seven, the airport will be asked, sorry, the town will be asked to... Back up for a sec. It's been a long day for all of us. If we pass this, the airport asked for fifty-seven thousand dollars in Article twenty-six. That will be a drop in the bucket compared to what I believe we will have to spend to defend this. I urge you to vote no, and let's explore other options to handle the request of the townspeople. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cortezie. Mr. Eldridge, then Mr. Fulton. Mr. Eldridge.
Okay, good evening, everybody. My name is Leo Eldridge. I've got about forty years of experience in aviation, military pilot, airline transport pilot rating, and about thirty of those years I've been working with and for the FAA. And I, on the surface, I sympathize with the concerns about the big airplanes flying into this airport, but I do not believe that the passing this bylaw is going to be an appropriate way to handle it, because I think it will fail, for sure. First off, the argument is to ban a particular design group of airplane. Typically, the FAA will not approve that, if you look at the regulations, as I have done, with the exception, as the previous speakers pointed out, unless it can be shown that the operation of those aircraft will detrimentally affect the safety of all aircraft operating at CQX. So then the proof becomes, how do you prove that there's a safety impact by operating those airplanes? It's not because the runways aren't designed to the Design Group II specifications. The FAA makes those decisions based on data, data-driven decisions. If you look at the National Transportation Safety Board records, the Design Group II airplanes going all the way back to the DC-3s have a flawless safety record at Chatham. That's the kind of information they're going to look for. They make data-driven decisions. So my, in my mind, it's a virtual certainty that this will not be approved, and if it is, it will violate the grant assurances. And you've seen the articles in the paper, about seven millions were collected so far, and we only have five percent contribution to get those kind of funds. So the grant assurances, if those regulations are violated, which I believe this will, those will be most likely withdrawn. And legally, the FAA has, and has in the past clawed back some of the funds that they provided if the airport sponsors violate the grant assurances. Now, will they do it? We don't know, but they have the legal authority to do it, and they've done it many times in the past. So I think the better way to handle this is to work together. We could establish discussions between the proponents of this bylaw and the state and federal regulators. The airports office of the FAA and the Flight Standards Service are the only two entities that can authorize an exemption to ban one particular design group of aircraft. Maybe that's possible, maybe it isn't, but if that doesn't work, let's think about voluntary compliance with the noise abatement or fee structure to dissuade those operators from using the airport as much as they have in the past.
Thank you.
So I urge you to say, to vote no on this article, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Eldridge. Mr. Fulton, then even though there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven people who'd like to speak, I wonder if a motion for the previous question might be in order. But, Mr. Fulton, go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is James Fulton. I wrote this bylaw, and I'm happy to offer my legal services on a pro hac v. j. basis for free to the town to defend it. You know, the Attorney General is a pretty good lawyer, so why don't we let her decide whether this is lawful or unlawful? I'm sure she's going to be supplied with plenty of legal memorandum after this, if this indeed passes. So I encourage you to pass it. You know, if these Design Group II planes require a thirty-two-hundred-foot-long runway according to FAA design standards, and if one of them overshoots into Merserfie's Shell Station, the results would be horrific. So this is not a noise control measure, nor is it required to be. One last thing. One of the charters that frequently lands, I have a friend who said, "I like these large airplanes. They bring my family to Chatham." Well, one of the ones that lands here frequently is the Cessna four-fourteen, which is a Design Group One plane, perfectly safe, meets the design standards, it carries eight passengers. So if, unless your family consists of nine people, which is what the PC-12 carries, you shouldn't worry about this measure passing at all. There are plenty of charters that can bring your family to charter that meet the design standards.
Thank you, Mr. Fulton. To recognize Mr. Dykens, under the rules of protocol, saying I moved the question doesn't quite do it until I recognize you. However, if I recognize you, as I just did, Mr. Dykens has moved the previous question, which is motion to cut off debate. To my left, Ms. Shields, to my right, Lady over there, and the five people in front of me behind Ms. Wilson all want to speak. So if you'd like to hear more, you will vote no on the previous question, but the question before you now is to cut off debate. Those in favor of the motion to previous question say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
Voted by more than the requisite two-thirds majority. It is my sense that there will be, that we should take this vote by electronic device. The motion, the motion before you under Article fifty-nine is as offered by Mr. Stahl, that the town adopt a bylaw as set forth in this article in the warrant. If you're in favor of the motion as offered by Mr. Stahl, you will vote yes. Is there anyone in the auditorium who has not voted?
We have two that we need to check.
One, I'm sorry, I couldn't quite hear you, because we have some people who remarkably enough want to leave.
We have two that we need to check.
Okay, thank you. We'll wait for those. And how about here in the gymnasium? Anyone who has not voted?
We have now completed in the auditorium.
Count has been completed. Vote will be closed. Please display the tally. One-hundred-and-ninety-two in favor, one-hundred-and-sixty-six opposed. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your extraordinary dedication, patience, and perseverance. I would accept a motion that we adjourn. Everybody moved it. All those in favor say aye, all opposed say no. So voted. Thank you all very much.